All of our productions at GCTV are sponsored in part by Bay State Health, providing the care you and your family need, when you need it, close to home. Visit them online at baystatehealth.org. Greenfield Savings Bank, visit them at 400 Main Street in Greenfield. Call them at 774-3191, or go online to greenfieldsavings.com. Greenfield Community College, providing access and excellence in higher education in the Pioneer Valley. Visit them at gcc.mass.edu. The Hammond Family, the Hammond Family are longtime supporters of Greenfield Community Television. New Fortune Chinese Restaurant, on the Mohawk Trail in Greenfield. Visit them online at newfortunema.com, call them at 772-0838, and check them out on Facebook. Real Cleaning Services, cleaning Hampshire and Franklin County since 1972. We don't cut corners, we clean them. Check them out online at realclean.com, call them at 413-422-1143. Peoples United Bank, located at 45 Federal Street in Greenfield. You can call them at 774-3713, or visit them online at peoples.com. The Solar Store of Greenfield, replacing fossil fuels and nuclear power, one home at a time. Visit them at 23 Fisk Ave., call them at 413-772-3122, or visit them online at solarestorofgreenfield.com. Thank you to our sponsors for supporting all of GCTV's productions.
Good evening and welcome to the 189th regular meeting of the Greenfield Town Council. We're at the John Zahn Community Center at 35 Pleasant Street in Greenfield. This meeting is being recorded, videotaped, and broadcast. If any other persons present are doing the same, you must notify me at this time. I see the recorder, and I see GCTV. Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Counselor Sund?
Here.
Counselor Alice?
Present.
Counselor Pfeiffer?
Here.
Counselor Dolan?
Here.
Counselor Gilmore?
Here.
Counselor Wheeler?
Here.
Counselor Mayo?
Here.
Counselor Linovic?
Here.
Counselor Mass?
Here.
President Reno?
Here.
Vice President Ricketts?
Here.
Counselor Stumpf?
Present.
Okay, and this is voluntary, would you please stand for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Motion to approve the June 20 of 2018 Town Council meeting minutes.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? Motion passes. And now we'll start the public comment, and if somebody could please bring me the sheet of paper, Wendy, perhaps that would be you. Thank you. And I think most folks know the rules, that it's three minutes unless somebody gives you their three minutes. Ed Berlin, and please state for the record your address.
Good evening, Ed Berlin, 20 Orchard Street, Greenfield. I'm here as the Chair of the Library Building Committee, the Vice Chair of the Library Board of Trustees, and particularly as Chair of the Library Advocacy Committee. And I'm here really, I have two requests tonight. One is for the audience, and that is, I can't really turn to face the audience, but it's really, tonight, I know there are a lot of people who've been asked to come to speak in behalf of the library, and I would really ask that everyone really be civil, respectful, and kind to each other. I know that feelings are pretty high, and people were upset after last month's meeting, and nobody was more upset than me, but there's still, there's no reason for us not to be able to treat each other kindly. There's no place for bullying in this town. So I wanted to start with that. And my second request is for the council. And that is, that I really hope that you don't vote on the library tonight, but what I'm requesting is that you have a thoughtful and deliberate conversation among you tonight about the library, and that for those of you who are no votes, it would be good to know how, what we could do to get you to vote yes. I think we all deserve to know where each of you stands, and what, if anything, we can do to convince you to support the library project. So thank you.
Thank you.
Nancy Hazard, 30 Spring Terrace in Greenfield. Thank you so much for letting me be here tonight. I'm here to talk about, I'm a great fan of Just Roots, and I want to urge you to please extend the lease, the 30-year lease as put before you. They're a fabulous asset to the town, and having that 30-year lease will enable them to both invest in the farm, and also for funders to feel confident that if they give donations to the farm, that they can actually implement it because they will be settled in one place for a chunk of time. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jessica O'Neill, 39 Mountain Road in Charlemont. And I'm also here to talk about Just Roots. So I have a little story to tell about, and it relates to your decision to be taken later tonight on our request for extended lease to 30 years. So here goes. So why a longer-term lease, and why now? So I had the opportunity to visit Shelburne Farms, which is in Shelburne, Vermont. And for those of you unfamiliar with Shelburne Farms, they're a not-for-profit education center. They have an active farm, they make a lot of cheese that you can buy here locally in our shops, and they've got an incredible amount of programming and incredible staff. They have a multimillion-dollar budget at this point, but that wasn't always their story. In their early years, their first 10 years, they struggled, like a lot of startups do. And I was there last winter and was able to interview their Vice President, Megan, who's been there since the beginning. And she told me a little bit about how, where they were at, at the stage that Just Roots is at now, which is in a stage where they were developing, they were kind of too big to be small anymore, but they were under-resourced, and they were kind of looking for an angel to come forward. And what happened for them was that they were able to, they were in a similar situation to us, where they leased their land and all the buildings on it to do their programming. And the year came where they were bequested all of the buildings on the land, so all of a sudden they had a fixed asset. They were able to leverage that asset to their advantage, so they were able to diversify their income streams and to get investment in their vision and their mission and their programming, and they are now this thriving operation. And I see that vision for Just Roots, but we're in a similar situation. We are, we've been under-resourced for several years, we lease our land, we lease the buildings, and until the Ways and Means Committee earlier today, it's never been my understanding that the town is interested in selling us or bequesting us these, the barns and the buildings on the land. So we're at a point where we need something that gives our investors the confidence to know that we have staying power. And we're at, we're eight years into our 15-year lease, which was our original lease, and we want an extension to a 30-year lease so that we're able to explore additional diversification opportunities for our income streams, and the ability to us to, for us to have confidence to invest in the buildings on the property, in the land, in the soil, and continue to have the resources we need to build health in our community. So we appreciate your consideration of our request, and I just want to say that your vote for our proposed longer-term lease is really a vote in confidence of Just Roots, and the work that we're doing in our community, and in the health of our community in the future. So thank you.
Thank you.
Plum Tree Lane, where, actually, there are no plum trees. I'm no, I'm not fond of plastics. Generally, I consider them a plague on the planet, and I try to avoid them whenever I can. And so, at the grocery store, I generally accept paper, and I consider myself virtuous for doing that. And I'm rather sorry that the Town Council wants to take that away from me, to take away my choice, because once you take away the choice, it's not really a good deed anymore, because virtue compelled is no longer virtue, it's just obedience. And there is no virtue in obedience, except for people we've already disempowered. So that's unfortunate, but I can understand the appeal of it, because it takes a lot of work to persuade people to do the right thing. And it's oh, so much easier just to require them to do it. I mean, parents do it all the time with their children. It's so much easier to just tell people what to do, and if you have the power to compel people to do it, then that is really tempting. And the last thing that people in power want to hear is, no, maybe you shouldn't use it. And I've known powerful people in this country, and in other countries, and to a man and woman, everyone feels that they are executing the will of the people, whatever they happen to be doing. And in this case, the council, some of the councilors, feel that they are just executing the will of their constituents. Well, not really. I'm your constituent, and you're not executing my will, and according to the last data we have, it's not even executing the will of the majority of the people of Greenfield, because the majority has voted this down. So I can understand that you feel you are responding to your constituents, but you're really only responding to a particular faction of your constituents, and I can understand that too, because it's really appealing. Everybody likes to have everybody telling them, oh, you are doing the right thing, you're being brave, you are doing what needs to be done. And people just relish that, and it's intoxicating to be liked by everyone, to have everyone telling you that you're doing the right thing. And the greatest danger in that is that you start believing it. It's, would be good for everyone to kind of internalize the famous words of Niels Bohr. Okay?
That's your three minutes, but you can finish up. Yeah, we want to hear that quote.
The famous words of Niels Bohr, that the opposite of every great truth is sometimes another great truth. And it's important to understand that you may be completely right, looking at all the information you have on hand, and making the best judgment that you can, and you can be completely right. And someone can use the exact same data, care as passionately about the issue, come away with the completely opposite conclusion, and still be completely right. So we have good people in Greenfield, who...
John, so we, once the buzzer goes off, that's your three minutes, and then I usually let folks finish their sentence.
Okay.
We're grateful for the quote, and everything else you said.
Okay.
I don't mean to cut you off, I just...
You will, that's fine.
Okay, thank you.
Good night.
And just so folks know, when you hear that buzzer, it means whatever sentence you're on, if you could just finish it up and wrap it up, I really hate to interrupt people.
Hello? Am I close enough, I hope? My name is Kathy Cole, and I live at 64 East Cleveland Street in Precinct 4, and I'm here tonight as the interim President of the Greenfield Public Library Foundation, to report briefly on our progress so far. I have great news. Greenfield citizens have now pledged over $620,000. Gifts and pledges have poured in since the last council meeting in December, ranging in size, literally from 20 cents to more than $50,000. This phenomenal outpouring of generosity is by individuals and families who have pledged these gifts, so that everyone in the city, and beyond, will be able to benefit from this fabulous new, fully accessible facility. And they've done this entirely on their own initiative, just at the beginning of what will be a long campaign. So for the foundation, and for the library, its trustees, the director and the staff, and the friends, we all send a Franklin County roar of appreciation. Thank you to all of those who stepped forward and made those pledges. To all the councilors, we want to say a special thank you. We know you all have the best interests of Greenfield at heart. Please know, we all share the same goals that you have, to balance investments in the future with careful money management. That's what we want too. We share those goals, and we appreciate your hard work, and the questions you asked about fundraising. Because the great unexpected bonus of your questions is that scores of people have been galvanized to step up, raise their hands, sign their pledge forms, and say they'll help. Many of these pledgers and donors will become the persuasive core of volunteers we will need when we're ready to launch the full campaign. Once the project gets the green light, the library foundation is ready to pick up the pace in moving ahead. We are confident we'll be successful. I've been a fundraiser for over 30 years, and the library love in Greenfield means we'll be able to raise the 2 million. An unexpected bonus, this is my last sentence, for the city, is that the foundation will continue to be a strong partner for the library going forward, even after the building is completed.
Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
Hello?
Hello.
Karen Larrabee, 24 Oak Hill Acres, Precinct 1. Hi, councilors, hi, Mom. I'm here this evening to tell you, and all the viewers, about a couple special events that this Greenfield, Friends of the Greenfield Public Library are going to be sponsoring. The first one is a book sale that we're gonna have on Saturday, February 2nd, from 10:00 AM until 1:30 PM at the library. It's a great time to come and get your Valentine's gifts bought. Hardcover books are a dollar, and the paperbacks are, I'm sorry, hardcover books are $2, and the paperbacks are a dollar. And we'd love it if you could come by and support us in that way. And the other event that we have coming up is the first anniversary of our 1,000 Books Before Kindergarten program. That's gonna be on February 9th, and so far, four families have completed the challenge within a year of the thousand, reading 1,000 books to their kids. Over 100 families have enrolled, and we hope to get another 50 to 100 to register before and after the celebration on February 9th. There's gonna be two-story hours, between the hours of 10 and 11. We're gonna have cupcakes, and free books for the kids. So if you could come by, we'd love it, and the viewers, anybody who's watching, we'd love to have you stop by. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. I'm David Brock, a 15-year resident and taxpayer in Greenfield. I'm here to say that I would like each and every town counselor to approve the new library. What I would like to do, but will not do, is to scream. Scream in frustration at the manner, substance, and form of a minority of the town councilors' opposition to the new library. Scream in rebuke to statements and sentiments expressed by this anti-library minority of the council. Scream in anger that the reputation and well-being of this community, in which I have much civic pride, is being harmed by an anti-library minority. But I suppose I will not do that, mainly because I fear that it would more likely lead to intransigence by the presently anti-library councilors, rather than move them to make the mature, sensible, and right-thinking switch to supporting our new library. While there are many excellent reasons to support the new library, and no good reasons that I can see to oppose it, I would like to make one thing clear to the town councilors who have opposed the new library to date. You cannot simply say no. You have to come up with something better. You cannot say no to bringing $10 million of the sales and income tax of Greenfield residents back to our community in the form of the state library grant, without presenting how you will bring $10 million of investment into Greenfield. You cannot say no to a project that the mayor and administration of the town assure will cause no increase in Greenfield property taxes, and produce a great public and economic benefit, without presenting how you will deliver a great public and economic benefit to the town of a similar form. You cannot say that $620,000 of donations out of an, out of an anticipated 2 million in private philanthropy toward a public good and civic institution of learning and community is not enough, without telling us exactly how you plan on raising $2 million for public service. You cannot just say no. You cannot say no to the overwhelming will of the citizens, business, community, and political leadership of our wonderful community, without making a clear and compelling case that you have a much better idea that will replace the $12 million in public and private investment, and the great benefits that the new library will bring. Since you have not, and will not be able to provide that, you must vote yes, rather than no.
Garrett Connolly, 84 Congress Street, Greenfield. And I'd like to talk to you all a little bit about plastic, and mention, by the way, I was interviewed on a television, went for 45 minutes, and the battery wore out, so I'll be sure to stop at three minutes for you, as best I can. So the thing about this is, is that I haven't got a sense from the Town Council, and I can only read and know what I found out in the paper, but I don't think that any of you have any idea that the plastic, of the plastic bags is a health issue. I keep bringing this up, but I don't get the impression that you get it. And for that reason, I'm kind of with you, Isaac, is until the people learn what this is all about, it may be only a detriment to approve the bags. They only amount to three, 8% of the plastic problem. It's a health problem. Shredding plastic under the solar power is poison. It's in every cell, of every tree, of every bush, of every fish, bird, and human on Earth. It's poison. You gotta get a handle on this. Plastic, decomposing plastic in the sun is equally as bad as radiation from a nuclear power plant. You gotta get clear. So it's good to ban the bags, I hope you'll do it, but if you do, then you need to put a paragraph to start it off, that you recognize that it, as are representatives, that it's a health problem, and that the reason you're getting control of the bags is for the health of the people, not because of turtles choking on bags, or whatever, it's for health. Now, if you say that it's for health, then you need to open it up, so in the future, we've been working on this since 2014. This is 2019, over bags and everything else. So in the, there's straws, there's plastic silverware, there's plastic cups, there's plastic plates, there's buckets, there's tarps. One tarp, if you ever watched a tarp decompose in the sun, it turns into little threads that go out, they infect your body. So there, when, when the younger generation comes before you, you need to put something into this regulation on bags that says, we recognize it's a health issue, and if you come forward to us and say, we want to expand it to include buckets. For instance, you buy a bucket, it costs $5, you have to put a $5 deposit on it. When that bucket gets brittle, instead of going into nuclear particles that you breathe, was that my three minutes? Okay, it's a health issue. Do something that opens the door, so the younger generations, you know, the younger generation doesn't eat salt off the shelf. They buy mined salt, because salt from the sea has plastic. So the kids know, and if you don't open it up for them, then this is a bad law, and I think we should do what you suggest, Isaac, and put it out to the people, so that we can learn and talk about it. There you go.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Emily Green, and I live at 260 and 1/2 Davis Street. I am also one of the ones who started working on the plastic bag ban back in 2014. I'm also a hiker, and it is so discouraging to see people not doing the right thing, when over at Poet's Seat in the last two weeks, I picked up three plastic bags from the ground, from the bushes, and the Connecticut River is not very far. So unfortunately, and sadly, in this country, and maybe in many other countries too, but not, I don't think as bad as here, people don't do the right thing. They just throw their plastic bottles, and straws, and bags on the ground. And so that's, you know, one reason that I feel we need to start thinking about this, and we need to think about the fact that we aren't going to have the space on this earth to throw away all the plastic that is being brought to us. I want to also just mention that our group that first brought this to the attention of the town is more than willing to try, and we will get the plastic bags for people who are unable to afford the eight to 10 bags that it might take. Oh, reusable, I'm sorry, reusable. We will work to get these for people. We've already donated 150 from our Greenfield Rights of Nature Group to the organizations that do the food bank. So I really encourage you to think about the fact that it's the future generation that's gonna suffer, and suffer far more than we're suffering. And it's so heartbreaking to hear all the reports, to see it on PBS News, they're talking about it all the time, the plastics in the ocean, and, I'm sorry, the plastic bags in these poor marine life that don't even realize this is not food. And you are ending up eating some of that plastic. And you are ending up eating some of that plastic with the fish that you are eating from our oceans. I don't know what else I can say, except I really appreciate that you are bringing this up again for a possible pass, which I hope I will see, because it's been a long five years. Thank you.
Thank you, Emily. Danielle Boudron.
Oh, Danielle, she's going to give her three minutes to...
Douglas Wright.
Hi, my name is Douglas Skywhite, 237 Conway Street. First off, I'd like to second the comments of Mr. Connolly, that plastic is toxic, and it's so huge and pervasive now, that it's everywhere. It's in our air, it's in our water, it's in our food system. There was a recent study done of the fish in the Great Lakes, and when they examined the poop of the fish, they found plastic. So, it's really, it's really huge, it's a huge menace. It is a health issue, it is toxic. And personally, I'd like to see it be brought forth as a ballot initiative, because that'll be an opportunity for us to educate people about what's going on with plastic, at the same time that we're asking them to sign on to it. So, I think this is worth doing. And we came close five years ago, and a lot of people have been more educated since then, so I think our chances with a ballot initiative are excellent. Secondly, I'd like to support the building of a new library. I think it's a phenomenal opportunity. When I came here 10 years ago, a lot of people said to me, "Well, our educational system is really not that great." And I think that with the addition of two terrific new superintendents of education, and the rebuilding of the high school, and with a new library, it can be a centerpiece for Greenfield to encourage families, and businesses, and lots of people to come here, not just from Greenfield, but from out of town. So, I think this is a phenomenal opportunity that we don't want to miss out on. And personally, I think that if we put this off a couple of months, if you guys can vote to put this off for a couple of months, we'll raise that $2 million, I'm sure of it. And we can do it, so let's do it. Thank you.
Thank you, Doug. Wendy Goodman.
Wendy Goodman, 529 Green River Road, Greenfield. I want to respond to so much that's been said, and I so appreciate what's been said. I wrote this because I wanted to say what I wanted to say, even though now I want to say other things. So, I'm just going to read what I wrote.
Could I interrupt you just for one second, just so I can explain to everybody? I, ahead of time, gave Wendy permission to take Dorothy's three minutes, so it's going to be six minutes.
Thank you. First, I want to thank all of you, the councillors, for your service. Whether or not I agree with you, I appreciate your efforts on behalf of our town, our city. Further, I really appreciate the council's attention to civility, and thank you. And I must say, I was disappointed in our town to see the vitriol against one of our councillors. While I have also been shocked and disappointed by some language and some points of view, I'm even more disappointed by the way people have been publicly dealt with and shamed. How is this respectful or caring? I believe everyone is serving to the best of their ability. If someone's giving voice to what many of us don't want to hear, I believe we should at least listen, and acknowledge and appreciate those efforts. Perhaps if we sought to better understand and address concerns, we would come up with even better solutions. In my view, we need to stop taking on the bullying and dismissive behaviors that seem to have been taken over our public and maybe even our private discourse. Is this really who we want to be? I'd much prefer to live in a compassionate, creative community where differences are addressed respectfully, but shaming people publicly is not an approach that I respect or want any part of. Just harms and perpetuates polarities and fights. In reading and thinking about all that's going on in our town and in the world, I wonder, when did we give over a creative problem-solving approach? An approach that takes into account everyone's needs, ones that values caring about our whole community, in favor of the quicker and easier win-lose model of elections and voting? That the majority wins, and leaves, at best, leaves many of us losing? More importantly, do we have the will to do it differently? To go back to caring for the whole community and seeking solutions that will incorporate and attend to our various needs? And I think we do this, I think that's our intention to do this. And, so here's a piece of change theory. When you do change, you have the idea of the change and the implementation of the change. If you do the grid, it gives us a one-in-four shot of having a good idea with good implementation. Okay? So, we can have a good idea with bad implementation, which we often see as a bad idea, and we throw the whole thing out. What we're looking at here is the implementation of two really good ideas. One is to stop plastics being produced and being used. The other is a library that's almost fully funded. I have somewhere on that, I'm going to just go on. "We seem to shy away from creative, new, untested solutions, since they may not work well, but change and survival always require adjusting course. Perhaps such flexibility is a muscle for all of us to cultivate and practice. Do we look to our responsibility for a long-term impact on the environment and our town? What will we leave behind us to our children and their children? Or do we look, more selfishly, to our current needs and abilities? I propose we do both. And part of leadership, to me, is helping people change, develop, and grow for themselves and for the community. There are two big decisions on the table today. Both seem to be no-brainers when looking to the future. Excellent ideas and the right things to do, at least when we look to see what we'd like to leave behind. But, and that's "but" that has us at odds, how do we do it? How do we implement these ideas in a way that does no harm to individuals today? Seems we've arrived at a plan to implement the plastic bag that has done just that. Commend everyone that has stuck with this and led us to be able to take this first step. Thank you all. I've understood that that was going to be passed today, and from what I'm hearing, that may not be the case." So, I want to read this. "As I understand the current concern about the plastic bag ban, which in my way of thinking is the absolute minimum we should be doing, even Jamaica is banning these bags now, never mind Boston, all other things, is the impact on individuals and retailers specifically as it relates to the charge proposed to mitigate costs of alternatives in our retailers. Some are saying 25 cents is too much, 5 cents is too little, waiting for a year is too long. One suggestion, I imagine we could work to have reusable bags available at these retailers for the first year for free, as one of engagement and education. We could even get children in school learning to sew to make these bags. It's one suggestion." There are so many, there are so many creative ideas of how to mitigate what we've asked, and I don't remember the gentleman's name, the first one that spoke, "What's stopping us from doing what's right? And let's see how we can mitigate that, and how we can work together to do what's right for the future of our town." See, I can't even stay on what I write. "Question of a new library is to provide us with another opportunity to be creative and collaborative. For me, I love the current library. I love the building. I have no particular need for a new state-of-the-art community resource. Today's library is great for me. But you know what? I'm not the only one in this community. I'm part of a larger community, and I want that community to be healthy, and vital, and vibrant, today and in the future. For the good of our entire community now and in the future, I'm willing and thankfully able to pay for something that will benefit everyone. Even if I personally do not have a need for it, I certainly will benefit, both personally and because our community will be more vital. That's what being in a community is about." Again, the councillor and the town is stuck on a yes-no vote. I believe Vern raises valid concerns that should and could be addressed, if we really want to be inclusive. What we don't know is if and how many home property owners, taxpayers, is that my six minutes? Would be willing to contribute. So, Penny's suggestion, instead of saying yes/no to the library, let's have some questions about, would you be willing to pay these taxes? How much could you afford to pay? What could it look like? And we don't even know that we have to pay the taxes, because we've got other income streams, from marijuana, from the garage, from what we don't know. So, the concern of how are we going to pay makes sense, but there are places out there. Let's not stop the future for our fear of today. And I just have to read my ending, because let us not group one against the other, let us not hold back progress, let us not leave a legacy as a community that has been determined by the abilities of those struggling in our community. Rather, let us leave a legacy of creative problem-solving for the good of the whole, one that takes into account the needs of the less and differently able, a legacy of respect and raising up, rather than a legacy of judgment of and pulling us down to the lowest common denominator in our community. We have done so much to be proud of. Let's continue to create our society that feels like a town, as a model of collaboration, consideration, generosity, and creativity. Let's be the change we want to see."
Thank you.
Thank you.
David Kemp.
How you doing? I'm David Kemp, Greenfield, Mass, 45th Place Terrace. I've always said that the squeaky wheel gets the grease, and that's what's happening now. A lot of you here tonight act as though every person in Greenfield should agree with your plastic bag ban. Well, guess what? We don't. Remember back in 2015? The people of Greenfield spoke and voted down the ban of plastic bags. Some councillors feel that the people of Greenfield are too ignorant to decide between paper or plastic. I feel it's only fair to allow the people of Greenfield to choose between paper or plastic. That's not much to ask for, is it? I do not know about all of the councillors, but I bet the majority of Greenfield residents reuse those bags for waste bins, you know, clean up after picnics, or when they go camping, clean up after pets, that's a big one. What's the point of discriminating against bags on one side of the checkout from bags on the other side? So, please, just let the good people of Greenfield have a choice. Thank you.
Thank you. Please?
Good evening, and thank you for hearing me. Louise Amio, 56 Madison Circle. A few years ago, Chris Collins referred to me in his column as a progressive activist. I was startled to be mentioned at all, and more so to be given a descriptive title. I have given that moniker a lot of thought since then, after I agreed it was probably accurate. And I have decided that to be a progressive, in my mind, means that my preoccupation in public life is always to work for what I think of as the greater good. So, just as I believe that the new library is important for the good of the community as a whole, I also believe that our banning single-use plastic bags is important for our community and the planet. Having said that, I would like to read from a Mass purg letter that I received this week, and I quote, "Remember dial TV sets, rotary phones, full-service gas stations?" You're probably too young, but I do. "Those are just some of the things from 1950 that are no longer around. But what is still around is the 6.3 billion tons of plastic that haven't been recycled since 1950. Some of the worst culprits are polystyrene foam cups and containers, what most of us call Styrofoam, and which Greenfield voted to get rid of, at least for takeout foods and beverages, plastic straws, and single-use plastic bags. Plastic waste just keeps piling up, filling our oceans, waterways, landfills, and communities, and all 6.3 billion tons of it that are currently in existence will be around for hundreds of years to come. How many hundreds? Scientists estimate between 450 years and forever. According to a 2015 study, we dump more than 8 million metric tons of plastic into the ocean per year, with that number projected to rise to 17.5 million by 2025. Now, plastic is also showing up in our drinking water and in our bodies. With plastic pollution piling up by the ton, we have no time to waste. We need to ban the use of our most single-use plastics with more sustainable products. After all, nothing we use for a few minutes should pollute our communities or environment and threaten our health for hundreds of years." I end the quote. "I believe it is our duty as responsible adults to protect the planet for the generations that will come after us. So, I am asking all of you, as adults who accepted responsibility to work for the greater good of Greenfield and its residents, to please vote to ban single-use plastic bags in Greenfield as defined in the ordinance that is before you tonight. Thank you."
Thank you, Peg Hall.
Good evening, Peg Hall, 34 Pierce Street. Paper or plastic? We've all had that choice shown to us at grocery stores, though they offer that choice a little less often now. I have spent the last 30 or more years of my personal and professional life reminding people that really the only correct answer, most of the time, is, "No, thank you." It's not a choice between paper and plastic. Substituting paper for plastic is not a solution, despite the fact that the plastic has numerous issues you've heard about. The paper bags are environmentally questionable, also when you look at the full-life cycle of production, which uses fossil fuels to create them, transportation, where they're significantly heavier than the plastic bags, et cetera. But the main point that I wanted to make tonight is about a phrase that was in the recorder yesterday, that I hope to get rid of, which was, the paper bag 5-cent charge was referred to in one place as a tax, and I want to make sure that everybody understands that there are no taxes in this ordinance, that a tax is something that people are required to pay to some level of government, municipal, state, county, or national. And there are no taxes in this bill. In fact, I wouldn't really even characterize this as a fee. What this ordinance would do would be to require the retail establishments, starting two years from tonight, presuming that this passes, to charge a minimum of 5 cents for something that costs them probably a lot more than 5 cents. So, as of right now, I would actually encourage all retail establishments to begin charging what it costs them for paper bags, because in fact, they are not free. Neither are the plastic ones. But when they give it to you for free, we think, hey, that's great, so we take more. And because it's not free, someone pays for it, and that's us, and we pay for it in the overhead that store has, so it's dispersed in other ways and charged to us somehow. And frankly, as someone who doesn't accept them, I kind of resent having to pay for everybody else's taking them. That annoys me, same as not using single-use plastic water bottles. But I wanted to disabuse us of the idea that there was any tax in this law, because it's not there. I also would just briefly mention that Danielle, who had to leave for some childcare responsibilities, was planning on announcing, among other things, that she is an artist that works with plastic bags, to try to raise awareness of the issue, and that she is also committed to working with our schools and with us in arranging for reusable bags to be distributed to the community, and working on programs to encourage that use. I also just briefly wanted, whoops, okay, Big Y, just going to mention that any place that Big Y operates, they, any place there's been a plastic bag ban, they do charge for paper bags, and they have just announced, I believe councillor Gilmore was going to be mentioning, that they have also just announced that they will be going plastic bag-free in all of their stores in all three states that they operate in as of 2020. Thank you.
Thank you, Peg. Is there anybody else who would like to speak during the public comment? I'm sure you can just come up and stand in line. Whoever gets there first is the first to go. And we'll, I understand that sometimes folks don't realize that there's a sign-in sheet, so I want to give everybody an opportunity, and again, we're timing you, three minutes.
Doug Sullivan, 38 Forest Avenue. Very quickly, I want to note that the heart of a democracy is an informed public, and one of the essential places that people go for information is a library. And so, having a library that is offering as many opportunities to learn and grow as possible serves our democracy. So, for that reason alone, I think supporting a new library would be a good investment. All of what we've heard from our town government is that... All of what we've heard from our town government is that the financials work to do this, so I'm not entirely clear why people are still not hearing that, and if they have questions, I hope they will be forthcoming with them so that we can understand that. But most importantly, I ask those who are opposed to the library, or the new library, to imagine what our current library and the state of it will be in seven, or eight, or 10 years, and what will happen then. It's not going to get any better, and the cost of making it accessible to all, which I think we and hope we all value, and in upkeeping and offering upkeep for a building that is as old as it is, I'm wondering what your picture of our town library in eight or 10 years looks like, if we simply stay with what we have? Because eventually, we're going to have to do something, and it's not going to get any cheaper to do that. So if we can get a new state-of-the-art library for approximately the same amount of money it would cost to bailing wire the current library together for another 10 years, I'm not sure why we would make a choice not to go for a state-of-the-art library. Thanks.
Hi. My name is Joan Pyferm. I live at 95 Maple Street in Greenfield, Mass. I've been a resident for almost 20 years now. I work at Jones Library in Amherst for the past 22 years, and I would like to bring some facts to everyone about libraries. I'm sorry, I'm a little nervous. The thing is about libraries is that if they don't keep up with the new technology, they're going to be left way behind in the seven or eight years that the gentleman just said. If they don't keep up with the technology, if the population does not come to the library, if there's not a particular number of circulation, the state requires that it be certified, is called accreditation, and this is what happens when a library's not certified. The non-certified municipality and its library will not receive any state aid to public libraries' monies. Number two, libraries in certified municipalities are not required to lend library materials to the library in the uncertified municipality. In other words, that cuts off everything from all the other libraries in the CWMS region, of which we are one of those libraries, and I think there's about 117 libraries in the region. Number three, libraries in certified municipalities are not required to extend reciprocal library services beyond in-library use of their materials to residents of the non-certified municipality. Number four, the library will not receive support through the Small Libraries in Networks program. Number five, the municipality is not eligible to apply for funds under the Public Library Construction Program, and any existing grant will be invalidated because the library must maintain eligibility throughout the construction process in order to receive grant funds. Number six, the library will not be eligible to apply for grants under the Library Services and Technology Act, which is LSTA program. The Jones Library in Amherst had to expand because there are lots of programs that we offer to the public, and there are lots of programs for young kids, teenagers, there's...
Finish your sentence, Joan.
There are lots of programs for... There's Sing With Your Baby, all the way up to the oldest person in your municipality. There's a whole list of what we have at the Jones Library here, at the Jones Library, and we have to keep the kids off the street. We have to make sure that there's something for everyone at the library. If we don't have the space for that, people are probably going to go somewhere else. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Couple of quick things. Anne Mayo, 143 Wells Street. About the plastic ban, I just want to mention that I was in Athol recently, where they have a plastic bag ban, and Market Basket was as busy as I've ever seen a shopping store, and somehow they have survived despite the plastic bag ban. Also, my husband and I, on our walks around town, often pick up trash, and one of the most common categories of trash we find are plastic bags. So yes, some people do reuse them, but most of them have not been recycled, or if they are reused, people then seem to toss them out their windows, anyway. And as far as the library goes, please remember how great a benefit the low-income residents of Greenfield, in other words, the little guy, need a current accessible library, especially to better their future and future generations of Greenfield residents. And also, on a personal note, there's a plastic show coming up at the Smith College Museum of Art where I work, which will just study the aesthetics and impact of plastics in our lives, so please come by, February 8th.
Thank you, Anne.
Steve Adam, 252 Davis Street. I wasn't planning to speak tonight, but if I don't speak tonight, I'll be on the couch, so here I am. I want to speak in favor of the library project, and I want to speak to the councilors from an economic perspective. As some of you know, I'm not originally from Greenfield, but originally from the Orange Athol area, and before that, from the Billerica area. I can tell you that downtown Billerica is a thriving downtown. They spent the money, put in a new library. It's a piece of art and fully accessible to everybody. As a result, there's foot traffic through downtown Billerica. Small businesses are thriving. Take a look at Orange. When I was first selectman in Orange, we had an opportunity to get 80% funding for upgrading the Wheeler Memorial Library. The town decided, the voters decided not to go forward with that project. Anybody driving through Orange recently? Not thriving so much. Take a look at Athol, next town over. Just spent the money, put in a new library. Look at downtown Athol. Their small businesses are not necessarily thriving, but they're not shut up. There's actually people going there. The reason is people go to the library. There's foot traffic that goes through, people look at the shops, they're there, there's an opportunity for them to see that there's places to shop, and they shop locally. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. Oh, I'm really sorry. Come on up.
Semi-prepared here. Hi, I'm Erica Gees, 66 Fort Square. I'm new to Greenfield. I moved here from, actually from Amherst and from out of the area by choice, because I love what this community represents with diversity, be it economic, be it racial, whatever, and I felt like this was my place, this Greenfield sang to my heart. I've been a library user all my life. My parents couldn't afford books when I was growing up, so my first volunteer job was at the library, and having access to books changed my life, same with my daughter's. So I am in support of the library, I'm a big user, I'm very happy with the library now, but I would love to see a better library. But for me, I think there's some important things to look at. If we look at this library, we do renovation, most projects that you do are for 25 years, you plan for 25 years, and you look at your investment. Currently, in that building, we're spending $15,623 a year on electricity. That was the last rate, the last fiscal year, I guess. Gas was $6,763 for heating. Now, electricity, in 25 years, has doubled in rate. So in 25 years, we would be spending $30,000. A new building, that electrical cost would be reduced to a fraction, just because of more efficient equipment, LED lights, daylighting, better design, and we could even get that to zero with solar panels. So I think that's something to consider as far as fiscal responsibility, that it's not only, you know, the building and getting the services, but it's also long-term costs. How can we not invest in something for the future and spend the same amount of money? Also, who knows what state Massachusetts is going to be in in a few years when the next cycle comes up if we pass on this one? Maybe they won't be funding that much. Maybe we won't have access. We don't know what the world's going to be like. So I think this is an opportunity that we have to take, and we should. As far as gas goes, doing a more energy-efficient building would also save us a lot of money, and that's something to consider. The other thing about libraries, I've done a lot of work in communities around the world post-disaster, and in this country too, libraries are really an important center, and they should be looked at as something as important as the fire department, and the police, and our emergency response, and our hospitals, and our health, because they are the information source when people are offline after disaster, they become the center. And this is something around the country we saw with Sandy, we saw with Katrina, we saw everywhere after the tornadoes, that libraries play a very, very important role. And it's not only about books. As an aging population, as an economically challenged population, there's so many services that a library can provide that we can't right now. So I'm in full support, and just wanted to add that. Thank you.
Thank you. Hello. Come on up.
Thank you for giving me an opportunity to address the council. I have to admit, I am a latecomer to this issue.
Oh, I'm sorry, even though we know you, you have to state your name and address for the record.
Sorry about that. I don't know all of you, but my name is Steve Goldsher, and I don't reside in Greenfield. However, I operate Hoxton Reed, and I have a private dental office here in Greenfield. And I've been in Greenfield for about, well, I was actually born here 60 years ago, and I grew up in Athol. And it's, I have to first say, there've been a lot of eloquent speakers coming before me, and so I applaud all the great things that they had to say. If I'm back here, can you still hear me?
Yep.
Yep?
No.
Okay. I'll stick a little closer. What I want to say, in essence, is I don't think you have to really overanalyze this, and I don't think it's really a philosophical debate. I can only speak to this through my own personal experience. When I was growing up in Athol as a child, there was the YMCA, and across the street was the library, and then there was Winters Donuts. And if you went to the library and you got a book, and then you went to the YMCA and you had fun playing some basketball or just running around, and this is as a young child, at probably the age of six or eight, then you went to Winters Donuts, where you could get two jelly donuts for a nickel. Times have changed, but the library has not changed. It was a way out for me in a small town that was economically depressed. On the way over here, I spoke with Bill Doyle, who's a pathologist and also on the Board of Health. He shared the same experience. It's the great equalizer for all the unborn children and the young children in this community that can potentially have a future, because access to books and education is the key to growth. And so I would passionately implore you to think about the legacy that you want to leave for your children and the future generations, if you want to see them excel, do better. Think about what this library can do. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Anybody else? All right. Counselor Stempel. I do want to say, I am just so proud to represent the people of this community. All of the eloquent speaking tonight, thank you so much for taking time of your evening to come and share your thoughts and your ideas with us. All the way back to 44. Page 44. These are just so short. Public hearing. In accordance with Home Rule Charter, the Greenfield Town Council will hold a special, a public, not special, a public hearing on Wednesday, January 16, 2019, at 7:00 PM at John Zahn Community Center, 35 Pleasant Street, to receive public input on the following. The Greenfield Town Council, upon recommendation of Mayor Martin, approves the payment of prior-year invoice for next request company in the amount of $4,750 to be paid from the FY19 Greenfield Technology Budget. The Town Council, upon recommendation of the mayor, ordered that the following sums be appropriated from the contractual stabilization fund to fund retroactive provisions of contract agreements. Fire, up to $27,000. Dispatch, up to $13,000. The Town Council, upon recommendation of the mayor, ordered that up to $109,340 be appropriated from the general stabilization fund for Wisdom Way Road Design. The Town Council will consider the same on Wednesday, January 16, 2019, at 7:00 PM at John Zahn Community Center, 35 Pleasant Street. Materials can be obtained from the Town Clerk's Office, 14 Court Square, from 8:30 AM to 5:00 PM, Monday through Friday, or by phone, 413-772-1555, extension 6163. Karen Renaud, Greenfield Town Council President. So I'm going to open up the public hearing on these matters and these matters alone that Counselor Stempel just read at 8:05. Is there anybody who wishes to speak on these matters that were just read? Okay, second reading? My pleasure. Town Council, second reading, January 16, 2019. The Greenfield Town Council, upon recommendation of Mayor Martin, approves the payment of prior-year invoice for next request company in the amount of $4,750 to be paid from the FY19 Greenfield Technology Budget. The Town Council, upon recommendation of the mayor, ordered that the following sums be appropriated from the contractual stabilization fund to fund retroactive provisions of contract agreements. Fire, up to $27,000. Dispatch, up to $13,000. The Town Council, upon recommendation of the mayor, ordered that up to $109,340 be appropriated for the general stabilization fund for Wisdom Way Road Design. Thank you, Counselor Stempel. And communications from mayor, town officers, and employees.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. I think Carol is going to be first.
Yep.
Thank you, Carol.
What about myself?
Sitting right behind her.
Okay. All right, thank you. Good evening. Thank you for giving me a few moments of your time. I figured you'd be missing me by now, since it's been a while. Can you hear me? Is this... No?
You kind of have to speak like this.
Really?
Yeah.
It's not going to do the thingy?
Yeah, you can hold it.
All right. That's all right. Okay, I hear it. So I'm actually here to obviously represent the Energy and Sustainability Department and to kind of give a snapshot of where things are at, because there's just been a lot going on and a lot of really great news, so much so that I didn't realize how great it was until I put it all together. It's not in a format to share yet, but I can work on that and disseminate it to everyone if that would be helpful. But I guess the first thing I wanted to say is kind of big picture, where we're at on the town side, is if you remember, I think it was last year about this time that Jim Berry came out from the Department of Energy Resources to acknowledge that we had saved over 20% on our municipal energy loads, which was a huge accomplishment that Governor Baker acknowledged, and I just want to say that this past year, we upped it to 27%. So that's pretty remarkable. Wait till I talk about the money, though, because this, like, I was like, are you sure? I'm sure. I did the math. But anyway, since 2008, when we started benchmarking our energy consumption across the town, despite utilities overwhelmingly increasing on the electricity side, our electric and heat costs across all fuels has decreased from 2008 to 2018, including our solar farm savings, $847,243. So that kind of blew my mind, because I'm always nervous about promising, over-promising savings, so I'm always cautious. It's working. So it's $847,243. And so one of them is just what we're paying for our utilities. So I'm sure you're all on it and aware and happy, but we just started our fifth year of Greenfield Light and Power where we've been offering 100% green electricity and currently at a price that is between residential and commercial, over one to almost two cents less per kilowatt hour. So not only is it 100% green, but it's a savings over Eversource, which we're very proud of. For the first year, we're also offering the greenest electricity possible. That is an option for those who choose to subscribe and that is also being offered at a lower rate, substantially lower rate than other comparable programs. So I'm very excited about that. And that again is something that people can opt into if they so choose. Everyone who's on Greenfield Light and Power will get the rate that is lower than what Eversource is offering. So that's something, again, that has been ongoing and it's pretty amazing that it's already, we're starting our fifth year. The second thing is just to talk about on the gas side, one of the ways we've been able to reduce our costs in addition to energy savings measures is through our gas contract. So we're currently paying almost half what the gas company is charging for our gas supply. And we work with really great partners who are looking out for us, that we have very strong relationships with. And we're able to extend our contract for three more years at a savings of, we're going to be about a third of what the gas company is charging through 2022. So that's an additional $25,000 a year that we expect to save from November of this year through 2022. So then, again, that's just a little sampling, but we have a lot of projects that we've just finished up and are very close to hopefully finishing up. I hope more than anyone. But the one great thing that we just finished up was a lighting upgrade to nine town buildings. This was a phenomenal opportunity for the town that will save us 200 kilowatt hours a year and close to, if not more than $40,000 every year on electricity costs. This was through a partnership with Eversource. It was a very time-sensitive project. We had to collaborate with several departments and are very appreciative that we can do that, mostly with central maintenance and the school department. So six schools and three other town buildings have all been upgraded to energy-saving LED lights that also have the added benefit of lasting for decades. So central maintenance is very happy about not having to change light bulbs so often. We aim to please. So another project, well, two of them, that were part of our last Green Communities grant that we're just finishing up now, will be saving another over $16,000 a year. Again, you know, these are conservative numbers. We have new heat pumps in the town hall that are much more efficient, keeping people comfortable as well as saving energy. We also have new rooftop units that are going in next week despite the horrid weather. I made them promise and I'm bringing them hot chocolate because we need to finish it so we can get the next round of Green Community Grants, which will be available next month. So, you know, again, it's keeping a lot of balls in the air, but it's all to try to continue saving Greenfield and being as efficient as possible. So there are some other solar projects. I feel like I've probably done my time, but I'm open to, if you have any questions, I can obviously talk forever. But then I also feel like I deal with this stuff every day, like, I'm like, you guys don't want to hear about this stuff. But anyway, so anyway, I'm done, if you want.
Director Collins, I have a question, a couple. Since we changed the zoning to allow for large ground-mounted solar photovoltaic installations, do you know if anybody's taken advantage of that?
Oh my gosh, I'm trying so hard to take advantage of that. The problem with the, not the problem, but the challenge with large ground-mounted solar is that the market in Massachusetts has, it's been very difficult to move projects forward. So for instance, on our well field, we've had a project in the works for, gosh, a millennium that we're still waiting to get through. So we do know that there have been some larger projects in the megawatt range. I would say two are coming to the top of my head. Eric Tora has to approve those through the planning board, so I think he might be a little more familiar, but those are the two that I'm thinking of. And then Eversource did one as mandated. They need to develop more solar power.
Okay. And then do you, just a follow-up because it has to do with solar, are those rebates ever going to come back again? Do you think, you know, when residents were being offered rebates to install solar on their rooftops, is that ever, or is that done?
Oh my God, it's still so great. It's so great. I mean, it's, Massachusetts, we're very lucky that there's a lot to take advantage of for solar, residential solar.
So there are still rebates?
Basically, in a nutshell, installing solar on your roof or on your property, you get a 30% tax credit that's available through the end of next year. There also, there's a $0 down, $0 down, sorry, $0 down solar loan program run through the state. And that was specifically started to encourage people to own their own system because the benefits are so great as opposed to leasing, which doesn't really benefit the homeowner much at all. It benefits a developer. And so there is actually newer programs that are, provide discounts to people of different income groupings that are very generous. So that's a 10% or 30% discount on your system. And in addition to that, you're still earning, in addition to offsetting any electricity that you use, you're also still earning, not the SRECs anymore, that program is done, but a new incentive that just goes on your bill. So it's, still, we're seeing paybacks of four years on average, four to five years for residential system and it's very, we are always encouraging everyone to do it.
Okay, great. Are there any other questions from councilors? Okay. Seeing that, it's just, I just wanted to make the comment that it's interesting with the large-scale ground-mounted solar projects because I was on the council in 2010 when we didn't want to allow zoning for that and only for commercial because the thought was that all these, people would suddenly put up these large-scale solar, you know, solar arrays in their yards. And so sometimes I think it's interesting when we, you know, when years go by and we do make that change and we see that the fear that we had didn't actually come true. And so I just wanted to keep, because I voted also to allow that zoning change this time. So yeah, I might be asking it in the future, but I think sometimes fear is just fear. Just a feeling, as a therapist would say.
Yeah. Well, I will say that the state tends to not look as favorably on, they don't want to see a lot of green space getting taken up with solar. And typically, again, we're seeing large out-of-state developers who benefit from that. And the off-takers, which in those cases are usually municipalities or other large nonprofits, aren't seeing that same benefit. So the state's been, that's one of the reasons the market's been stop and start for so many years now, is trying to figure out how to encourage the development they want to see happen and encourage people of moderate income and different, you know, capabilities to adopt it and not have the developers making all the money and running away with it.
Yeah, exactly. Well, thanks for the update.
No problem. Anytime.
Okay.
Thank you. Good evening. Thank you.
Good evening.
I just wanted to give you a quick update on a few things in the DPW. So far, our operating budgets are looking pretty well at the halfway point, so we're in pretty good shape there. Couple of announcements. Back in October, we did get the word out, you know, through the press and Facebook, but I wanted to take the opportunity to let everybody know that the transfer station is open on Fridays once again. We're now on winter hours. So we're open Tuesday through Friday, or excuse me, Tuesday through Saturday, 11 to 2:30. Excuse me, correction. And on Saturdays, 7:30 to 12, are the winter hours. Just recently, in the last week and a half, we were able to get a CO on our new building on, at 189 Wells Street. The engineering department and the rest of the administration, including myself, have moved to 189 Wells Street and I wanted to get that out. So any DPW business, you can come visit us and see the new place. Snow and ice budget, I guess we ought to bring that up since we've got a great forecast ahead of us. Right now, snow and ice budget's running about 29% spent. That number's a little obscured because we had to get some extra salt into the shed to stay ahead of what storms may be coming. So we're a lot better off as far as the 29% because we haven't put the salt out there yet. So we're working on, already working on spring and next summer projects in the engineering department. The staff's doing a great job of buttoning up from the latest construction season. And our work never stops. We look forward to the next construction season. So we're pretty busy throughout the winter months, too. So crafting my first budget, being back, working on capital. So that's about it.
I have a question. Director Warner, I've just been asked this from residents. The free sand and salt that's in the yard that folks can go take advantage of, is that paw safe?
I don't believe so, not at this point. We use the standard rock salt and sand mix.
Oh, so it's not good for paws?
We use a very, very minimal amount of rock salt only so the pile doesn't freeze solid after hours so that the public are, they're able to dig into it.
Okay, so...
Otherwise, we put straight sand out there, but the piles freeze and they can't dig into it.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Dolan?
Would you mind just clarifying on the Wisdom Way project that we'll be voting on tonight? The amount that we'll be appropriating is just for the design? And is that the only financial liability that the town will have for that project?
Yes, correct. There was already an appropriation for 25 to 50% design on that project. The project has moved much quicker than we anticipated, so we're back looking for the rest of the design money, 75 to 100%, 100% design. And there's also, it's moved so quickly that there's a public hearing on February 7th here from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. With Mass DOT, they'll have the plans and the prints and any public comment on that project. So that project is moving along quite nicely. It's a feel-good thing for Greenfield, just like the Nash's Mill project, a large savings to the city.
Councilor Mass?
Director, can you tell us what the total cost of 189 Wells Street was at completion and where the additional funds beyond the $300,000 appropriated by the council came from?
As of right now, that project hasn't been closed out. We got a CO to move in, but there's other things we need to finish in the spring. I don't have a figure for that, counselor.
Do you have an estimate of what's been spent to date?
We're somewhere in the vicinity of, I believe, just over $300,000 at this point.
Just over $300,000?
Yeah. I haven't looked at the tally recently. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam President and councilors and residents. I think I'll echo your comments, Madam President, just that the, it's a pleasure to listen to the people, as they say, their comments and the tone in which their constituents or our councilors constituents are relaying the information to the council. The, it's really exhilarating in a way. These are difficult decisions that we all make. Some of them are made on the timing and leverage of situations. I think the sharing of ideas and the dialogue that must be developed so that we all get to a place that makes sense and is for the benefit of the community is something we should continue to develop into a habit. Let me just quickly touch on some subjects and then we'll, of course, take questions. The Wisdom Way funds, so Marla, the Director Warner, has certainly indicated how this has accelerated most recently. The previous director, Director Willett, had moved a different path for Nash's Mill Bridge and the Wisdom Way. The idea was to produce the background engineering and then to work as what's called heavy lobbying at different spots. And he was very good at bringing the information forward, spreading the 25, 50% design information around to different spots. We were fortunate to have people in those spots that very supported these projects and moved them along and kept us in tune as what we had to do next. So we did that over a period of years. What's finally important is that this is Nash's Mills Bridge and Wisdom Way are city projects. Nash's Mills is a little over $3.5 million. Wisdom Way is, depending on which form you're looking at now from DOT, would be somewhere probably close to four. That's money that the city is not going to pay because we're doing all of the engineering and we'll enter into 110% agreement. That agreement with DOT means that they handle everything. And if it goes above 110% of their estimate, then we have to deal with the overrun. That's not something I, when I first became mayor, that I liked. I thought it was, I didn't think it was a good deal for the community. But I have since learned that their estimates are pretty good and then they add on quite a bit to cover any mistakes they make. So they don't want to make a mistake with the community. And so we started entering that. We started with the roundabout out by GCC and Corrine Road. Nash's Mill is underway and as Marla mentioned, we're hoping to have it done by the end of next year. Wisdom Way is really rapidly moving, so much so that, as he indicated, the public hearing, I believe it's going to be here, but it is in February. So that's looking for a date to be funded, an RFP. So it goes out to contractors to bid on the project. What makes all this possible is timing and leverage. And that's why sometimes we'll have a project ready to go, but it hasn't moved in a while, but all of a sudden it takes off. And that's why we will, when something isn't taking off, we will go to somewhere else because we can get a grant, we can get the leverage, we can get the, project is still in a high priority level to get done. The recession amount, you've got $8.1 million that's going to be, we're requesting to be rescinded from our authorized unissued. So at the Ways and Means Committee, Mr. Counselor Sun indicated that it doesn't have any costs associated with it. And that's true. It doesn't cut any costs because the costs haven't happened yet. So the recession amount is something that you have already previously seen, asked questions on, approved, and allocated. And then that process with the money and the project goes to the city and the city works out the deal with the departments and whatever agencies, state agencies or federal that are involved. So we've been very efficient along those lines. And when you take the $10 million parking garage, even though we had to vote the $10 million, and at the time there were questions about, well, where's the grant money or how are you going to do it and so on, we knew we had the grant, but we have to vote the max amount. So now, we did receive the $7.5 million from the state and now we're returning that borrowing authority that you gave us to you. So if you can imagine that you already have, just take this $8.1 million of authorized borrowing and bonding out to the city to do some projects, now we're giving it back to you. So that authorized borrowing is still there at age. So if you thought there was an opportunity to make improvements in whatever projects you approved at that time, then you authorized that money. And so the question is, now can we just substitute that return date one authorized, previously authorized and approved funding for borrowing and bonding to do something else? There are other topics that will come up as, including the library, that discussion could be expanded on. I'd like to comment on the Just Roots lease. You know, one of the first initiatives I did as mayor in 2019... You know, one of the first initiatives I did as mayor in 2009 was apply for an APR, agricultural preservation restriction as a municipality. It hadn't been done very often, and in fact, it was a rare occasion for APR to approve a municipality. We did that with the help of the council. It was kind of like a brave new opportunity that no one knew what the result was going to be, but we did it. The state approved it. We were able to work very closely with Just Roots. That's probably why we were able to do that, because they were willing to take over that land, improve it, bring back the nutrients and run a support system for food. And if anybody has had an opportunity to remember Maslow, I think it starts with food. And Greenfield has been providing that basic staple since 2009, not only from Just Roots, but from our block grant programs. So I hope you would approve that extension to 30 years. They have multiple projects in the works and they're very successful in working their grants and applications with the state and the federal government. And this will certainly give them the stability they need to prove that they'll be here for the long term. I do want to comment, I don't want to complain, but I do want to comment that the departments are in the process of, as Director Warner mentioned, reviewing their 50% position. So half the year is gone. We've got a number of issues we're working on with the software systems we're using and accounting. The finance director is working on FY '18, FY '19 halfway through, and FY '20, as you know, will be starting the budget. You'll get it toward the end of March, but we're putting all the pieces together now. We're also doing the capital budget. Those capital budgets come directly from the committees and departments, so we need to, I need to not be bothering them so much so that they are, can get that work done in time to stay with the charter mandates of the timing. So my non-complaint is that I have 13 counselors. They contact a number of department heads, including the mayor's office. That request, those requests are substantial. They're not quite easy to stay with outside. They're diverse. I mean, each counselor has a special interest or you have a precinct concern or a constituent issue or a major topic or a research project. It's very difficult for us to respond. And I would apologize for that. I would like to have the time and the resources to respond immediately to each question from each counselor on their specific subject, but I can't do that and we don't have the staff. And some of these questions are very difficult to answer. Like one question was, how much would it cost to replace the entire sewer line in Greenfield? I don't know. We don't know. Nobody knows. We can't answer that question. And if we did, it would cost $300,000 or $400,000 to get to, get a feasibility study for that. So, and in fact, it has been discussed in the past and that's why we know it costs that much. So the, we'll try to get to your questions and we'll try to get back to you with all the answers and the support that we have. You can always come into the office. Sometimes we do walk-bys and talk and to Counselor Wheeler and Counselor Mayo, we've done that in the past. This, if you can have, we need the time, but we must have it in writing. So if you have a question, bring it to us in writing and we'll follow through with I think there's a comment from the Ways and Means on Dispatch that I can address on a specific question, but not with, not with it all. So we'll take any questions, but Liz would like to comment on the budget or anything. No, she wouldn't. Though we're ready.
Could I, could I interrupt you just for a second? I think there's a Honda Insight outside with their lights on. That's what this is about. License plate 872YM3. It's a hybrid.
I'll just quickly comment. Believe it or not, I've been here not quite two and a half months and it's been busy. And as the mayor has stated, I'm working on several years and it's difficult when you're behind the eight ball trying to record a lot of an entire fiscal year that's already passed, to do computer process closes for an entire year that's already passed, bring the current year up to date, get the budgets ready for '20 and capital. The next two months are just really tight on timeframe. And we have the audit and that is scheduled, by the way. We do have that scheduled for Bloom Shapiro to come in, as well as we have apparel conversion right after that, which we just have to do because we are currently running two systems. And first of all, the duplication and the timeliness and some of the encumbrance issues we encounter with running the two systems, it just will be terrific once it's up and running. So there's a lot going on. It's just that this particular month or two is really, really tight with juggling all these different things that are all coming together at the same time. But I do have, I want to comment, the staff in Town Hall, they're so trying to help and pitching in and they're terrific. So...
Thank you. Councilor Gilmore?
So Director Gilman or Mr. Mayor, whoever is able to answer this. It was very recently published in a paper that there's an estimate on the cost of the firehouse. And I was wondering if you could give us some more details just because sometimes it's easier to get it straight from the source.
Yes. That's still a work in progress, but you have, you had previously received a $12.5 million estimate for the fire department. That was placed in that particular debt graph without any conversation with me and that was not the case. I then began working directly with the architect and we've had several conversations, as recently as 3:30 today, by email. And so this is a work in progress. We don't have a, we don't have a direct on a definitive number, but we are working on reducing the square footage and producing, by using the rule of thumb, $500 per square foot, four construction projects, four fire departments, coming up with a rough idea of about $9 to $10 million. Of that $9 to $10 million, there are a number of value engineering that goes in after that and the incentives and rebates that go with different types of construction processes. In addition, we have an earmark of $2.3 million in the Economic Development Fund for that site that we secured last year in anticipation of tearing down the building and completely leveling the place so it could be ready for something. So we have, we have a number of different options we're working with. And though I understood that the newspaper reporter wants to get as much information as he had, as he has out to his readers, I agreed to give him all the information I had. It's, as mentioned, a estimate, a preliminary estimate. And when we had hard information from our architect with the design, the footprint and the square footage and the estimated cost, then we can bring that forward to the Public Safety Committee and we can start working on that.
Okay, so just as a follow-up, is this going to follow that same model where we have to borrow the $12 million and then recoup the grant money later? You said, you said there were different incentives. Is this going to follow that?
No.
No?
No, the cost, the total project cost is going to be around $10 million.
Well, I think what I'm, what I'm getting at is, I had read $8 million and you're saying $10 million and then we were going to recoup some, some other costs because of incentives.
Right, so you read $8 million, well, you leave the hundreds of thousands off for change. So you read $8 million and I said $10 million because we already have $2 million as an earmark.
Madam President, I have like three or four questions on three subjects.
Sure.
Mayor, I'm sorry, I'll bring this a little closer so you can hear me. Mayor, I'm looking at page 64 of the packet related to the rescinding of borrowing authorities and we're all for rescinding borrowing authorities. I think you're going to get unanimous vote. But what I'm confused about, and most of these, I understand, you don't spend, there was cost savings, you didn't spend as much as you did. But what I don't understand is the water department dump truck and the two tractor mower. The water department dump truck was appropriated in 2009 and the mower in 2012, there was no, there's 100% savings for both of those items. So clearly, the decision was they were either grant funded from another program or the decision was not to buy that equipment. And so my question is, why does it take 10 years to figure that out and send us the rescissions? Why aren't we getting these much more frequently?
Yeah, that's a good, that's probably a good point. I haven't researched the rescission process with the city or town council in the past, but as you know, since I've been mayor, we've been scrutinizing the authorized unissued and using it as kind of like a cleanup every, every other year. This year, we're doing it annually. We did it last year in February and this year again, of course. So part of the process is that these are debt accounts. They're almost like charge-offs in a way so that we would take, if those, that project wasn't started, it can't finish, it can't be started now. So we need to just get these off the books. So this is part of the cleanup and I don't think, I think we have a big jump from, I think there's one on there for 2007. So the first four or five are, you know, almost a decade plus. Then everything else is pretty current and it's been our policy the last couple of years is to, if you get a capital improvement approval, then the departments need to work the project and get it done so that doesn't, doesn't hang out there.
So not a, I certainly understand that. I was surprised to see some of these because I have seen rescissions from you before. I know you've been dedicated to this process. I'm wondering if it's possible, and you don't have to give us an answer, I know that you're very busy in the next couple of months, but after you've got the budget out, if it's possible to get us a comprehensive list of the authorized unissued so counselors can start looking at that and asking questions about why something from 2009 hasn't been purchased yet? And that's just a request. The next question I had was related, I asked the director about the DPW modular building and I know he's new, so I know he probably may not have had all the information or maybe my information is incorrect. I understood that the $300,000 that that plan, when it was put in place, did not account for the foundation for that building, that a foundation had to be put in and there was a significant increase, almost, you know, over $400,000 and approaching $500,000. Is that incorrect? Do you know what the total cost of that project is today?
The question, the answer is no. I don't know the exact cost, but I anticipated this question this evening and I did bring some information regarding the building. So let's let me go through here quickly, if you will. You had a proposal from, from the recent past director and went to the council for an approval in 2017 for $300,000 in those three identified sources of funding. One was the retained earnings in water, retained earnings in sewer and an overlay surplus brought by the assessors department. At that time, we had 432,000 round numbers in water and 448,000 round numbers in sewer. After that approval, I think it was June 21st, there was an approval and then, then there was a reconsideration by one of the counselors, Counselor Sun, I believe. And then it was brought back to the council and the council reviewed it again. There was little discussion, but the, in 2017, again, actually, the motion was by Counselor Stempel and seconded by Counselor Mas to appropriate the money and to, in the, the process for reconsidering that project was defeated. So it was only after that June meeting were we able to then move forward. By the time we got to this, by the time we got to this process, it was, I think in 2018 that we had the, had the building, the foundation done. So the $300,000 included the foundation, excavation, water and sewer to the property line within four feet was to be done by the DPW.
So were there cost overruns? I'm not sure.
Yeah, so we had, we had a contract. The total contract was $300,000. There was a change order of $15,000 and the final numbers aren't in, but there's going to be some outside excavation work that has to be finished.
If you could please send us those final numbers when they do come in so I can have an understanding. I hate for rumors to fly around that are untrue.
Right, there's no $400 or $500,000 cost.
And that's why it's helpful to have real numbers.
But I think it's good for the council and all of us to understand that when our closing out process, it's also a financial maneuver that has to follow certain steps. For instance, for instance, the Federal Street School project of a little over $3.5 million with 77% reimbursement was just closed out last week and the final signatures were taking place. That started, I think, four years ago, maybe. And same with other projects. This place right here, the John Zahn Center, is not closed out. We need, we need to look at it for a year after, just like we did the high school, to make sure the people that have done the work and guaranteed their work and warranted it are then followed up. In this particular building right now, we've got a couple of things that we're still closing out on the punch list.
The last question I have, or last subject, at least, your honor, Mr. Mayor, is it was recently in the paper, your proposal for what I'm going to call, and I'm sure it's wrong, the Honeybee Saurus banner that was attributed to be $20,000 on the parking garage. Can you tell me what the source of funds for that $20,000 banner is?
Yes. The parking garage, remember, we came back for an additional $500,000 to be taken from the FEMA, FEMA reimbursement payment. The council voted half of it, 250,000. So of our $10 million project, we had a $10.25 million project for the parking garage. We had $204,000 scheduled for architectural detail. Through several meetings with the building team and the contractor, the project manager and the architect, we made some changes where we were going to, there were a number of other parts of the building that needed attention rather than the architectural exterior detail. So we dropped the $204,000 off and we moved into doing other things with inside, inside the building, more in the construction line or in the safety line, from signage to different types of spandles on the side of the building. We had, we had a grant set for the pocket park of $20,000 was going to be used for the landscaping in the pocket park. That's the stretch of land facing Bank Row. And we decided to take the grant for the pocket park and have that paid for by the, by the grant 100% and use the landscaping money to move and stay within the budget. We then decided to use that $20,000 for banners to do something for the building and bring attention to the pocket park. And that may have been where we made an error. We brought attention to the building, which automatically moved us into the signs ordinance and then we had to go to the ZBA to get an approval because it was a sign. If we said, don't look at this, maybe on the sign, no, I'm only kidding, but it will be, you'll be hard pressed not to look at it. Bubblebees are yellow, dinosaurs are green, so I think you'll see the difference.
Just a, just a comment on that, Mayor. I'm not going to comment at all on the subject matter of the sign. That's certainly, for experts, greater than me. I know nothing about dinosaurs or honeybees or, or even tourism. It is a, I'm sure that there are great minds who worked on that. My, my concern is that this is a project that was already over budget and you opted to add something that wasn't contemplated when it became before the council. It would seem to me, you know, the cultural council might be an appropriate source of funds for that, but when you had a project that was already over budget, adding flourishes without coming back and asking is, I personally consider it disrespectful of the very vigorous conversation the council had. conversation the council had about keeping that project on budget. If we could have been $20,000 less or you had at least come to us with, with the request, we could have had some broader community deliberation about that. And I think it would have sort of helped some public support for it. Even if, even if, either, even if it had been approved, there would have been less of a backlash. But just a comment, thank you.
Mayor Resbon, Madam President. And I agree with you. I think more communication is always, always better on any topic. The, the opportunity to turn this around from a $204,000, a $204,000 cut in the budget allowed us the flexibility to be adding different variations within and outside the building. And then when we cut to $20,000 for landscaping on the pocket park because taking advantage of a grant, we then had, we had more elbow room to do some creative and innovative attachments to the building. So even as it stands now, if we considered that 20,000 for the banners at 75% reimbursement, we're really talking an investment from the town of $5,000 and investment from the state of $15,000. So I think even that leverage and the timing of doing so is beneficial. The only other comment I want to make is that, that particular project is unscheduled and completed with a CO and use and under budget.
Mayor, maybe I'm wrong and I don't understand how this works, but I've been told repeatedly that the first $7.5 million that went into that came to the state and only the money from the town went in after that. So the last $20,000, the money for the banner was 100% taxpayer dollars. And the project overall was still over budget, which is why you had to come back to us for an appropriation, unless you're telling me that today, the appropriation we made, the additional appropriation, wasn't needed and you're going to send us a rescission on that project.
Well, Counselor, I appreciate your observation and you're pretty clever with the numbers. So you know, the 10.25 million was allocated. So that was the new budget. So we came in under budget, under 10.25 million, yes.
Counselor Ellis.
Yes. I just have a couple of questions about, well, I have a question, likely a follow-up question. So we're going to rescind the 7.5 million, which was a grant that we, that you obtained from the state. Am I correct in recalling at the meeting when we spoke about it that the city was never to use that 7.5 million out of the borrowing, but that we were going to get the grant? And that we, I believe the words were, "I'm not doing the project unless I get the $7.5 million grant."
Actually, I'm recalling, Counselor, that you said, you said something about the $7.5 million grant.
I'm talking about when we approved the project.
Exactly.
Because there was conversations about, how do we know that we're not going to spend more than $10 million? Or how do we know we're not going to spend all $10 million if we don't get the grant? And you had said, "If I don't get the grant, I'm not doing the garage."
Well, I think I've said that more than once and publicly. And I think that was heard in Boston as well as other places. And so that's why I think we were offered the $7.5 million.
Yes. So my question then becomes, we were never planning to spend the $7.5 million in this borrowing, is that correct? It was never to be used for the parking garage or anything else?
Can you give me another example? By the way, I have one. How about the library is a $20 million project and a $10 million grant? So yes, we're going to have to vote on the $20 million library and have good faith that the communications we have with state agencies are going to follow through with the $10 million grant.
Okay. But my, my question was about the $7.5 million. Because I'm trying to understand if, if the process of the $8 million, if, if the thought process is that we had already approved the $7.5 million, so it's not like we're increasing our borrowing, which is what I thought I heard you say earlier about the rescission. We were never planning to have to bond the $7.5 million. So by rescinding the $7.5 million, we can't just say, "Okay, we'll just use it for another project" because we were never planning to actually use it. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's how we did the high school too. It's a $66 million project. We had 80% reimbursement. We knew we were going to get 43, 44 million from MSBA and we borrowed, instead of 22.4, we borrowed 21.6.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
That I understand. What I'm, what I'm getting at is, in the paper, it was reported that this $8 million could just be the $8 million for the library, but that's not actually correct.
I do like the reporter, Josh Solomon. He's an excellent reporter and an excellent writer, but I can't, I can't read every word he writes, so I'm not familiar about that. I know I've had a conversation and I don't know what was printed, but if you, if you, I don't know what your question is, I guess.
My, my question is, it was reported that you had, I mean, I have the copy, I can read it, but it was reported that you had said that it will be no cost to the taxpayer for the library because by rescinding the $8 million, it makes our, it takes our debt from 30 million to 22 million, but that's not the case. It just frees up capacity to borrow more money by rescinding.
Well, the rescission amount is taken, is already on our debt. It's in within the 8% to 10%. So it's deducted, deducted from the authorized on issue.
Counselor Ellis, let me go to a couple of other counselors and then come back to you.
Just one follow-up to that.
Sure, sure.
The $8 million is not reflected in those charts that we have for the 8% to 10%. The $8 million is money that, if it were bonded, would show up in that chart. So that, what you just said is incorrect. And I, I just want, I just want to be very clear that the information is, is, is correct because it was reported that way in the paper. So if, if the paper got it wrong, I just wanted to make sure that we were on the same page about the rescission because I'm 100% for this rescission and I'm going to vote for it.
Most counselors are, I think.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Counselor Dolan?
On another subject, I'm sure that everybody on the council is looking forward to having our health department back in shape. So would you mind giving us an update on that?
Sure. We have, we have issued a interest letter to a director. The timing of that person coming is, is still up in the air. We have sent also a letter to a interviewee who has indicated she was interested in Greenfield, but we have just received her declination letter. So she's not going to, not going to come to town. We have some other strategies we're working on, including some in-house training, utilizing MOU with a former inspector for, for Greenfield Board of Health on one day a week. And we have a really generous offer from a multi-certified credential to health inspector to work with us beginning the first week of February. So hopefully it's, it will, to work itself to, to a final conclusion in a healthy department, no pun intended, for, by April or May. Thank you.
Counselor Sutton?
I was just curious. You said you were going to shrink the footprint of the fire, fire department, is that right?
Yes.
I'm just wondering why, because in case, you know, as the years goes on, fire trucks get more complicated and, and sometimes bigger. And if you shrink the footprint, you might have to add some later on in the, in the coming years.
Right, Counselor, we would try not to be that foolish. So the five bays that have been designed, we're going to keep and that authorizes or sets up for multiple vehicles under one roof. So we'll be doing that. The architect we're working with has got almost three decades of expert professional work in fire departments. So he's been guiding us very closely and I'll continue to work with Chief Strand, of course.
Counselor Ricketts?
Mayor, I just wondered if you had any information about the senior work program, if that's going to continue this year and will they get more months than what they have now?
We are going to continue the senior veteran workup program. Last February, we asked the council to increase the maximum exemption from 500 to 1,500, which was allowed by the Municipal Modernization Act. And this past September, it was brought to my attention by, well, one of the people working on that program, that the increased reimbursement was difficult for participants to achieve. So they had, had more hours, increasing hours from 45 to 136. There are a number of moving parts in this. One is the providing the funds that will cover for the exemptions for veterans and elderly to work the volunteer hours and receive credit for it. The, the increasing annual minimum wage affects the number of participants and, and amount of money that has to be put in, into this program. The number of, the number of participants will decrease if we don't, if we don't keep monitoring the number of, of the amount of money dedicated to the program. So the MGL Chapter 59 and Section 5 and leads the program up to the local mayor and council to approve or implement or change the program. So with that, we will be, we've worked with the assessor's office, the Veterans Group, the Council on Aging with Hope McCary and the assessor's office to work out a proposition that we'll bring to the council to extend the amount of time that elders have and veterans have to volunteer. At the same time, the, we're researching other communities that have been doing this longer than we have to see what type of ordinance and language they use with the city councils. So yeah, that addresses it, I think. Some people have said they can't fit all those hours in a short period of time.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Counselor Ellis?
I had asked last month, knowing that there was going to be an absence in the assessor's office, what the plan would be for that. Is there an update on that? I know I had been told that I'd get an update this month. I was hoping I could get that update if you have it.
Yeah, we have, we have a floater position that was, has been interviewed. The person's been hired and is, going to start in two weeks. The floater position is going to serve some, some work in the DPW office, the assessor's office, and it's not determined yet, but maybe the Board of Health. The current office is manned by RRG and the RRG will provide a advisor or an office attendant of sorts to work with citizens in Greenfield and handle the counter. And then we'll also have the floater in there within three weeks.
Just to add a little more, the RRG temp person is starting tomorrow, is a former assessor. In the meantime, too, we also created a shared Google document. It's a phone log request. And so that given access to RRG and as well as a few other departments, like planning, like Eric sometimes could possibly do in a butters list if somebody had that request. And so everyone has access to it. They mark on it if they've completed it and who completed it. So, and every, and people can access it remotely, which is great. And then in the meantime as well, we do have, RRG is in there on Thursdays. This other person, once they're acclimated, can be there another day. So we'll have a few weeks of, of two-day-a-week coverage before the new floater arrives. So, go ahead.
I have, she has, she has to tell me, as much as I like you, she has to tell me. My, is there, as soon as we know, will there be something put out so that the public will know what days? I mean, I assume it's not going to be every day that there will be somebody there, but...
That's correct.
That there'll be maybe a set schedule that they'll know that they can come in at certain times to...
Right. I am waiting to get this temp's availability.
Okay.
She's coming in tomorrow to get acclimated and then when we settle on a day, we'll, we'll put it out there.
And then just one final question. How is it being dealt with currently for people who have things like abatements? Because they have to be in by a certain time and I think that sometime this month. Have they been being, have, have they been able to turn them in to someone up till now?
Yes, thank you for asking. The Collector Treasures Office is receiving the items and date stamping them so that they are proven that they've been submitted in a timely manner.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none, thank you both, Mayor Martin and Director Gilmore. And we're going to ask for G-SET. You're welcome. We understand it's your birthday and wish, want to wish you a very happy birthday.
Thank you very much.
Yes, and we know there's nowhere you'd rather be.
Multiple of 35.
You're not 70.
No. Good evening, counselors.
Now we can start talking about your age.
Thank you. Just an update, this month, G-SET will pass 850 total households and over 800 people in town serviced. It will be the 15th month in a row that we will have an increase in base sales. In fact, we already passed last year, last month's number today. So we have 11 more days this month and we anticipate we'll have quite a good month this month. We're seeing, what I find really encouraging is that our growth isn't coming just from new areas that we're opening up, even though we have opened up quite a few new areas, primarily now on the west side of town, although some in the center as well. We're a little bit hopscotching around and filling in holes from the original build out before we move on later this spring to getting out of the core and heading both north and south out of town. And we're also beginning the process of looking at some of the larger developments. I believe we're starting with oak courts and doing our preliminary engineering and we're excited about that. We think it's a good thing for us to be doing. Mostly, however, I want to talk to you about TV. We spoke at a recent council meeting about it. There was a small little article in the Recorder. We have had tremendous interest from people calling us and asking about television. We had said that we'd been working on it and it was something we may be able to bring out. I can tell you, we will be introducing TV and internet bundles this spring. They will be full service bundles of anywhere from 25 to 150 channels. It will have full local channels, all the local Springfield and Hartford channels. It'll have a free DVR. It will be available on multiple platforms, Android, Roku, iOS. There's still certainly work to do. It will come with G-SET internet and we anticipate savings of around 35% or better over comparable packages that are currently available. And we think that means that subscribers could save somewhere in between 800 to 1,100 a year, depending on the package they have. So we're targeting a March rollout. It actually comes right over your G-SET internet connection. So it doesn't have quite, for existing customers, it's a much easier install. There isn't a lot of upfront expense involved with it. Although we will be offering some streaming devices for older TVs and people who need that at a very good price, just to encourage people. It is the culmination of quite a bit of work, a lot of negotiation. I believe it was yesterday, we finally locked down Netson, which we thought was pretty important to get for this part of the world. And we feel that it will really be a... And we feel that it will really be a boon for us. We think it will really help increase our monthly numbers and get us where we want to go in the future. And it will be available to anyone who is in a covered area, whether they currently have G-SET or not. The way it works is it has to come with G-SET Internet, which is a function of dealing with network television contracts. So you will hear more specifics about it within the next month or so. We will certainly be giving a lot of information before the opening date. We may even have a soft open for a week or two before. But it is something that we're moving forward with and something we're very excited about.
Councillor Mas?
Thank you, Director Lahn. First of all, I'm encouraged by your numbers. They're right on track where you said they'd be, and that's great news. A couple of small questions. The DirecTV is, seems pretty obvious, but it's going to include GCTV?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
We want to be sane.
And we can't call it DirecTV.
Okay, so it's not DirecTV? So it's a satellite TV?
No, it is actually, it is a G-SET Internet TV.
It's internet television?
It's internet television. So it will be marketed under the name G-SET True Vision TV. So we have set our own packages. We work with, obviously, a number of upstream partners to make something like this happen. But we will be able to set our own packages, set our own pricing. It includes really quite a few things that you are charged extra for from other outfits. We will not have any hidden fees of any kind. You will see one price. That's what you will pay. There will be no surprises on your bill ever.
Love the idea of not being charged extra for DVR. The last question I have is, you recently had an outage, and I understand that that was dealt with very well. I saw some comments on Facebook. It was very responsive to the customer calling in. I do how, and so I'm not concerned about the outage at all. But what I am concerned about is the commission has a, I know you're not subject to open meeting laws, and that's totally appropriate, but are you going to do a public listening event where your customers can come in and give you feedback all at one time rather than individually, that the community dialogue? Is that something you might think about in the future?
Absolutely. Sure, we'd be happy to do it.
Thank you.
Councillor Ellis?
I have three questions, if that's okay. I think it's cool, we talked about the TV a couple months ago, and I was really excited because incremental revenue and all that stuff, I'm a numbers guy. My question is, I've heard, and I don't know if it's true, so I'd like you to let me know if it is or isn't, that GCTV is having a hard time with getting their revenues that they generate from Comcast through the cable contract. Does this contract that we have provide any fee that goes back to the TV entity for the community? Do you know what I'm talking, if you don't know what I'm talking about?
I do know what you're talking about, but I don't know the particulars because that's, I don't really do that part of it anymore. I can tell you that we have, I've met with Gary Longe and with different members of the GCTV board, and what we can do and what we have done is offer to give them a free feed into our package that we wouldn't charge them for. We've offered to work with them on donations through our website that we would send 100% to GCTV. That is obviously their decision. I don't speak for them. I don't try to speak for them. And I don't have anywhere near enough insight into their situation to be able to speak coherently about it. But what we basically agreed on was that we're both community operations, and we should be trying to help each other as much as we can.
Yeah, it was, the only reason I ask is, it's not a G-SET-specific thing. It's an internet TV and cord cutter provider issue because the Cable Advisory Commission only allows the contract between regular, so to speak, cable companies. So I'm not trying to blame you. I was just wondering...
No, 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 I don't think you are. I just, I was the chair of the last Cable Advisory Committee. And what's happened since then, just I know as someone who watches this space, there has been a proposal by the FCC to allow cable providers to deduct, in effect, what they consider to be the value of the free channels they offer, like Channel 15, that this meeting goes out over, from the amount of PEG money they give to the issuing authority, which then can, as the issuing authority decides, go through to local public access television. I don't know what the outcome of that is. I certainly know from working on the Cable Access Committee that a reduction in PEG money, which is clearly the intent of the cable companies that are trying to push this through the FCC, would be terrible for local access television. There's not much we can do about it, other than just try to offer to help wherever we can.
So just a really quick follow-up. I think that your idea of being able to donate to GCTV through your website would be great. And I think if there's a way to work on that, that's awesome. My typical question that I ask every month, any headway on bill pay online for G-SET services?
Yeah, and I'm afraid I'm going to give you the same answer. At the moment, the job of provisioning new areas and the desire to really get to as many people as we can says that we're not there yet. I will tell you, we have made progress since we last talked, and we are now in testing of a version that we have put together. So behind the scenes, are we getting there? Yes, but we're just not there yet.
Thank you.
I'll try to talk to you again about it next month.
I'll ask again, just because I like to be updated.
Councillor Wheeler?
If I might just add to the conversation that you just had, and I'm going to speak as a board member of GCTV here, the rulemaking change that went before the FCC has not, the final decision has not come down yet on that. It would potentially reduce GCTV's revenues by 20%. I'm still hopeful that that will not be the case. GCTV would still be able to provide the services that they provide now, even with that reduction, although it would be a problem. I do know that as a board member, we haven't, as far as I know, come to any formal agreements about, around GCTV being included in this package. And so while GCTV, I think as an organization, really wants to make it happen, it is dependent upon an agreement that does include funding that makes GCTV a viable entity in the future. And so I hope that as the Board of Directors of GCTV, I hope that we can have that conversation and come to an agreement like that.
Great.
Vice President Ricketts?
And I think there'll also be some customers like myself, who I have G-SET and absolutely love it. And I went from like $180 a month with Comcast down to 43 because I didn't think I could wean myself off everything yet. And so I have like the basic. And, you know, I may stay there for a while, knowing that it helps GCTV 15, but I love the Internet X, everything, it's so fast, it's beautiful. And at the last outage, it must not have happened around me, because when I read it, I was like, what? Nothing's wrong. I've been watching TV the entire day and night. And I didn't even notice anything going on, so...
We had a small localized outage that was caused by a power surge that caused one of our APs to fluctuate and flood corrupted data into the system. It affected about 30 people, so that's about 3% of the total. But it was still an outage, and we still had to communicate well with people and do what we could to get it fixed.
And the person that you have that works for you, that comes in to install, so knowledgeable, because I have other equipment of my own, and so it was so great to have somebody teach me what I have. And here, you could take this back to Comcast, you could keep this, and, you know, it worked out really well. And I appreciate how great they were and how they call you later and say, how's it working? Is everything good?
Good, thank you.
And ever since then, calling Comcast to get away from them and telling them I was going with you because I was bragging about G-SET, they kept saying, oh, you're not going to like it, it's not going to be fast enough. And so now I have this record thing that comes on every time I try to watch TV, and the only way to bypass it is to try to record. And I never had DVR before that. So it's almost like they're pushing me to, you know, hang in there. I'm staying with you.
I just want to emphasize again, Councillor Wheeler's right. I said I don't speak for GCTV, and I don't want to. All I can say from our side is, we very much would like to work with them if that's something that works for them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And School Committee Superintendent? There's Hayden.
Hi, everyone. I'll jump right in. I have a quick highlight reel for you of the School Committee affairs. Much like yourselves, we have also reorganized. I was elected to serve as Chairperson for this year. Katie Karen, Member Karen, has been elected to serve as Vice Chairperson. And Member Susan Ekstrom has been elected to serve as Secretary. So we are all excited to move forward into this year. As well, we are very, very busy in the coming months. We have much revised policy that will be coming to the full committee table, so please keep your eyes and ears open for that. As well, we have ongoing negotiations. And we have, at the subcommittee level, entered into deliberation regarding the FY20 budget. For any folks that are interested in hearing or sitting in on our public meetings related to the FY20 budget, please keep a lookout at our calendar, also on the Greenfield calendar. And what's funny? I like your glasses, too. Member Cameron Ward is the Chairperson of the Budget Subcommittee, so if, I recommend getting in touch with him if you're interested in knowing any scheduled dates and times for meetings. The next Budget Subcommittee meeting is scheduled for January 22nd, I believe, at 4:00 PM. And then last but not least, it was a real pleasure to attend the Yellow Event at the High School that stands for Youth Engaged with Legislators and Officials. Much appreciation to those that attended. It was a fantastic event. And much appreciation also to teachers, administrators, and Dial South who helped to organize. Jordana, Superintendent?
All right, so good evening. I will pick up where Chair Nunez left off, and I just would like to echo my thanks to the councillors that participated in the youth event at the high school. I know that Councillors Mas, Gilmore, Dolan, and Wheeler participated in person, and many more of you expressed interest and support. The power of coming in person and speaking to our young people and showing them the process of disagreeing and listening and engaging in civil discourse in their own high school with state representatives and state senators and talking about issues that matter and finding out that our young people have some really great insights into these issues is so empowering and so encouraging. And many people in that room left saying, I think the fact that we were listened to today mean that I'm going to continue to stay engaged in this process. And for our young people who do care deeply about these issues, it's important that they know that when they put time and effort into finding out and coming up with solutions, that there's somebody there who's interested in acting on that. So I really want to thank all of you that expressed that. I'll give you a quick calendar update of some things that have happened and are happening. We do have some days off and odd days because of the calendar as it approaches. Monday is no school in observance of Dr. Martin Luther King Day. Next week is midterms at the high school, so we do have half-days for the high school only. And Friday, there is no school because we have a professional development day for our teachers. And then we are heading, not long after, into kindergarten registration and welcoming the class of 2032. So we are always thinking about who's coming next. I know, it's really pretty amazing. We do have some new staff members in the school department. I want to let you know that we have a new Transportation Coordinator, Ed Vudrin, and he has a background in law enforcement as well as working in the transportation industry. And we have a new principal at our youngest school, the Academy of Early Learning, welcomed a part-time principal just after the Christmas break. And he is a retired elementary principal that worked in Northfield and has an excellent way of connecting with our students and our families. So we are really excited to have them on board. You heard about the policy work that we're doing on the School Committee, and this is an important initiative because it literally touches all aspects of school governance. So we've worked through Sections A and D already, and we'll continue to do that. This council expressed some interest, the middle school robotics team last month participated in a fantastic competition at Western New England University. Our students were recognized for their work in coding in particular. And I just want to say, this is thanks to the efforts of our teachers at the middle school and to Ms. Cummings, who's now at Newton School, but started this program at the middle school. So it's really quite exciting. And as winter storm Harper bears across the country, I just want you to know, I will be up at 4:00 AM and thinking about how to safely, although I don't create the weather, I do try to make the best calls possible. I think that's all we have. If you have any questions, please let me know.
Vice President Ricketts?
Well, I know you have a girls' basketball game going on tonight, and so I'm hoping to wake up to great headlines that she broke a school record, Reagan Hickey, so good luck out there. I know people are watching, so someone will probably text me to tell me it's been done.
I'm sure it's been done already.
I wondered if, when you have the snow days, I know, I believe, Orange does it, do you do the homework bags? Is that something?
So this is always a hot topic. There are people that feel very strongly on both sides of this. We don't, right now, have plans to do Blizzard bags. The Department of Education is very interested in this because some districts have tested it out, and they're starting to get a little more stringent about the requirements for how those days are counted. So at this point, there's a little bit of, not testing, but further investigation from the department about how districts are using and accounting for that time in a way that makes it a little more difficult, I think, to implement. So that's something to be mindful of. The other thing is that it's challenging for certain families, particularly students with disabilities, to have access to the full range of services that they would receive during the school day if they are at home and they don't have those staff members supporting them. So that in particular has been one of the reasons we haven't yet moved towards it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Also, if you really truly want our middle schoolers to make reusable bags, we can do it.
Okay, now closing the public hearing at 9:25. And we're going to move on to motions, orders, and resolutions. Vice President Ricketts?
Okay, bear with me between the stroke, and I don't have my glasses, all right? For the Town Council, move that it be ordered that the Greenfield Town Council approves new ordinance as attached Exhibit A, Chapter 343, an ordinance prohibiting single-use carry-out bags, and further amends the table and index of contents of the code, and further that non-substantive changes to the numbering of the ordinance be permitted in order that it be in compliance with the numbering format of the code of the town of Greenfield.
Is there a second? Okay, motions have been made and seconded. Report from committees.
Okay, it was a positive...
Okay, it was a positive unanimous from our committee.
Do committee folks want to speak to it? Counselor Dolan. I don't know why I had a hard time with your last name.
Just to kind of introduce this, the version that's on the table now is a modification that came out of the last discussion that we had on this topic. And it is an attempt to strike a balance between the positions that councilors expressed. So under this current version, there is a fee on paper bags, a mandatory fee. That fee is five cents. And if it passes tonight, that fee will go into effect two years from today. The ban will go into effect one year from today. But the first year, there's no fee that allows people to get used to it. And kind of throughout this process, we've tried to strike a balance between the needs of shoppers and the needs of the business community, which was the rationale behind the fee to begin with. So I'll leave it at that.
Counselor Mass.
I appreciate the efforts of my colleagues who put a lot of work and did try to reach some compromise on this, and I do recognize that. I want them all to know I do appreciate that, just as I appreciate my colleagues who voted to waive the rules of procedure to allow this to be reconsidered so we didn't have to wait nine months to continue the conversation. Because I think irrespective of where we stand on it, it's an important conversation. The community cares about it. I think a lot of what was said tonight by many people on all sides of the issue was important. I was particularly impressed, and I know this from my work at the Mass Municipal Association and the work I've seen around the state, that sort of education and the state of how we see plastics has moved since we voted on this in 2015. And so the vote that took place in 2015 may not be reflective of the community today. It may be, but it may not be. I don't know. I have some issues personally with this. I couldn't vote for this as it stands today. And I'll tell you what they are. One is a technical issue, and most of the technical issues were resolved. I know that Counselor Dolan paid special attention to those. But the one technical issue under enforcement, this specifies that the director of the Health Department shall be the enforcing person. A, we don't have a director of the Health Department. Hopefully, we will in a year from now. But presumably, if we create an ordinance, we don't want one person tasked with enforcing it. Presumably, we want the department or the Board of Health to be tasked, or their designee to be tasked. So you might want to add that language just for the practicality of it, because if this passes, it needs to work. I am struck by, there's two items that are particularly difficult for me. One is, I hear from my colleagues who want to ban plastic bags, that these are really bad. It's a health concern. Members of the community say it is a litter concern. It is a long-term environmental concern. And I just don't understand the difference between a plastic bag that I get at Foster's and a plastic bag that I get at a restaurant or a liquor store. Or a paper bag that I get at a restaurant or liquor store. Plastic is plastic and paper is paper, and I think we are picking winners and losers and protecting classes, and we generally shouldn't do that. People who are in commerce should all be affected in the same way. Other people might disagree, and I can understand that, but if we're going to do this, let's do it to everyone. The second, but I do appreciate the exception for nonprofits, religious institutions, those governmental agencies. That was something we did not do in the Styrofoam ban, and those are the people who were most impacted. Salvation Army, fraternal organizations who are most impacted by that change. And hopefully, if we pass this, we might consider revisiting that ordinance to put that exception in. The fee of five cents, it is, I understand the purpose behind it. The purpose behind it, as I understand it, is that in many ways, paper bags are actually worse than plastic bags because the carbon footprint of transporting these heavy bags is worse than the carbon footprint of their very light-milled plastic bag. So begs the question to me, why aren't we charging a fee on plastic bags and banning paper bags? But that's not what my colleagues want to do, and I get that. But this is, paper bags are a lot, do cost something, and I think people recognize that. But they're a lost leader for businesses. They're paying, it is part of the overhead. They're giving it out. They choose to do it. It's similar to milk. You go to, some places, you go to milk and you can get it for $2.50. You know it costs more than $2.50. They're doing it to get you to come in to buy the more expensive stuff. And so I really hate getting into the dollars and cents of telling a business what they have to charge. I think that is an intrusion into the private sector beyond what we want to do. That's just my point of view, and I don't think I, as a counselor, am ready to tell them what to charge for their products. But the biggest thing for me is this is effective a year from now. And I think there's a compromise to be had. If I, if the majority of the community feels like I do about these things, this ordinance, as it's written, doesn't make a lot of sense. And, or a majority feel the other way, that we should have this, this can be decided at the November election, which is not that far away. This ordinance isn't going to take place till next January anyway, and we're going to have an election this November. We could change the effective date to upon passage at a regular election, and it would actually go into effect quicker. And it would have the support of a majority of the community. And that gives an opportunity for those people who are in the audience who said education is important, to have that conversation. And I know I'm at my five minutes, so I will pull back. I'm not going to move to table till we get this, the language for the election at this time, because I think people want to talk, but that's what I would look to do tonight.
Counselor Gilmore.
I just wanted to respond to a couple of things there. So the fee wasn't, Counselor Dolan and I have different views on the fee. I see the fee as a disincentive to help people remember, because if you just switch them to paper, then it's not really doing what we want it to do for the environment. If you have that disincentive, it reminds people to start using their reusable bags, the cloth totes. So that's the primary, my primary reason for keeping the fee, even if it is small. As far as the liquor stores go, we agreed that liquor stores are regulated at such a level that we didn't want to open that can of worms and find out later on that this ordinance was not going to apply because of some other law at the federal or state level. So we decided to just stay away from that completely. And the idea of sending this back to the voters, I think, is something that doesn't completely bother me, except for the fact that, you know, if this is going to be a non-binding referendum, then it just kind of feels like, if you're not going to vote for it anyways, despite what the voters say, then I don't feel like it would make any sense to do that.
Just a point of reference, Counselor Gilmore, it would be binding.
That would be my proposal.
Or I should say, a point of clarification.
Thank you.
Counselor Stempel.
I'm trying to mix it up a little. Thank you. So I work in a city where plastic bags were recently banned, and so at the counter, when you, when you pay for your order, they ask you, would you like to pay, do you want a plastic bag for five cents? And five cents isn't a big deal. I have, I hope I have five cents for the meters if I need it, but it was more of a checkpoint. I have this bag that I carry with me all throughout Boston. It has my laptop in it. It has my lunch. It has my workout clothes. Probably live out of this bag all week long. I was like, I don't need the bag. It was more like a checkpoint. It's like, obviously, I can pay the five cents for a plastic bag, but I didn't need the bag because I bought these. If anyone wants some Sweet Tarts, let me know. I bought these, and I was like, I don't need a bag because it's a bag and I can put it into that bag. It's not, it's not about like, oh, it's a fine, it's a tax. It's like a checkpoint. You can make a decision right then and there, like, do I really need a bag? I already have bags. I have four bags with me at any given time. Like, I think we're getting convoluted about what this is. And I just want to remind my colleagues, we're setting legacy here with these conversations. And I don't want to keep circling around about, we already talked about the five cents, the 25 cents. Let's move away from that. We already talked about all these things, and I heard we can compromise. Well, guess what? We compromised a ton. I'm tired of, I'm tired of having the dangle of compromise put before us. So guess what? We can table it, come back to it. No, we're just, you're just trying to get your way. We have to make a decision. I have, I have residents emailing me not for yes or no on situations. They're saying, make a damn decision. Let's do it. This is friggin' ridiculous. Let's make a friggin' decision.
Counselors, also, I want to say sometimes when I'm looking for people to call on, I see you in order, but I'm trying to run a balanced meeting, so sometimes I'm looking for an opinion that's different than the opinion that was just spoken. So if it looks like I'm skipping over you, it's because I'm purposely trying to balance out the conversation. But I'm not fine. Okay. So just wanted to put that out there. Vice President Ricketts.
Okay, first of all, I want to say, Counselor Mass, I thank you for acknowledging how much work this was, because I know we started this and appointments and ordinances like last February or March. So it's almost been a year for us. And I started with like, no, this has already been in front of the voters. I don't like this. And people will remember, because I know Wendy almost jumped the entire room after me when I didn't wake it. But the last time this was before this council, I said I wouldn't vote for it at all unless the paper bag piece was free. And so all the councilors voted for, we finally said, okay, all right, we'll do that, and made a friendly motion, and we took that totally off the table. And then some people voted against it anyway. So as much as I do hear Counselor Mass, and I do like some of what he has to say, I personally have gotten burnt on this by trying to work with what I hear, what some of the community has to say, and then it didn't even still work, because people were like, no. And I am with Counselor Stempel, where the emails and phone calls I'm getting are saying, this is a pretty big town we live on. I can't believe you guys are working on the plastic bag this much. Can you please vote it and move on and do some other things? I can tell you about potholes. I can tell you about, I can tell you about other things that I really want in Greenfield. This is not one of them. This is not big enough. So I'm ready to vote yes, and, you know, they know, getting the nickel was a long process for me. Because I'm like, a quarter, are you out of your mind?
Compromise.
And we compromised to the nickel because it's not for two years. You know, had it started a year from now, I would still be a no. But then I just spent Christmas in Boston with my son, and we went shopping. And I carry totes in my bag that's around this size as well, only because I cannot drive any longer. And so we were in line, we were in Marshalls and TJ Maxx, and there's a ton of people there, and they're all buying, and they're getting these paper bags that the minute you put things in there, they're probably going to rip on the way to the car. And I kept saying to my son, you all live in Boston, why don't you have totes? Don't you have to go on the tee? Look at me with my tote from Greenfield, because I'm just so used to it. But it's just everywhere, you know? And then I've got an email about, you know, I won't shop for groceries in Northampton anymore because they charge for bags, so I'm going to go to Ethel. With all the grocery stores we have here. So after a while, I'm just like, let's just pass this, and yeah, let's move on to some other issues, please.
Counselor Ellis.
Yeah, I've, I've been against the plastic bag ban, not because I don't believe that there's an environmental impact, because I do believe that there is, and I believe that it's significant. I actually was, I don't watch a lot of TV, but I was watching a piece on, I don't know if it was 2020 or 60 Minutes or, and it's a really, it was a really compelling piece of news or journalism that they had on there. And it made me think, and I'm like, maybe I should just vote for it. But there's one difference with this that I have, and that is, it went before the voters. I would vote for this tonight if the effective date was, as Counselor Mass said, effective upon passage on a binding question in November. And I would vote yes tonight to make the effective date the day that it passes the ballot on a binding question. And so if we made that change, I would vote yes, and I would not vote yes to reconsider it. I would vote yes because I was voting yes. So I think, for me, it's that the voters have made a decision, and whether we think that that's a stale decision or not, that's the last, and I said this before, it's the last time that I heard from the city whether they did or did not want this. My guess is that if we put this to a binding referendum, it's probably going to pass. That's what I think. So I think we should, I think we should let the people have their say, because then the people who say, look, we voted on this before, and you're not doing what I wanted, I would say to them, it passed at the ballot this time. We have it. And given, given what I watched on that, I think it was 60 Minutes, if it were a binding question, I would probably vote yes at the ballot for this. But sitting here tonight, if I were to vote this through with the only data that I have from the city saying they didn't want it, that would be going against exactly what I'm supposed to be doing. So I'm, I would offer that as an amendment if, if we think that that could get us to a place where it passes. So I'm offering that, and I will offer the amendment if we, after, after discussion.
Counselor Wheeler.
Just moving back for one second to the point about charging the five cents, and part of the reason for doing that, I think, is to create a level playing field for independent or smaller retailers. I know that Greenfield's Market used to charge for paper bags, and they basically had to stop due to market pressure. Next, I'm gonna echo what most people have said, that I'm tired of talking about this. My constituents are tired of talking about this. I think Counselor Stempel put it best when she said, plastic bags are not important. Our grandparents all grew up without them, and I would like our kids to grow up without them if that's possible. I think what this comes down to for me is, we can't choose stuff and things and objects over life and nature and the world. We can't choose what's convenient over what is best. So what I would ask of those councilors calling for a binding referendum in the fall is, would you, in good faith, vote for the library if a non-binding referendum on the library was put forward and the voters voted for it?
Okay, so I'm going to speak, because I haven't spoken on this, and then we'll go back to councilors who have already spoken on this. And if any councillor also, because it seems as though it's wound its way into the conversation, wants to offer anything they want to say about a non-binding question on the library, although that's not the motion on the floor, so you really don't have to. But I understand, Counselor Wheeler, why you put that out there. I was listening to... I was listening to our former Conservation Commissioner, John, he was the head, John, and he's really good with words. And I was hearing him when he said that we should wait to hear from the voters, and that we shouldn't impose rules on others, and I've also heard it said that we can't legislate behavior. And, and I get all that, and I think there's a fine line with a lot of it. And I think that's why people vote for a representative government, because we can't put everything to the voters, and we do have to make some hard decisions. And then that's where people get the opportunity to vote for us or to not vote for us. And I'll, I'll put out there myself, my values and the reasons I believe I get voted into office, and I could be wrong, is because of those values. And I value this ban, and I'm gonna vote for this ban, knowing that I'm running for the same office again in less than a year, and if you don't like the way I voted, then at large, you could vote me out. And I will take it with dignity. Doesn't mean I won't be a little bummed. But, I just wanted, wanted to put that out there. So I am, I, I, I understand about waiting to hear from the voters. I think that is important on certain issues on this one. I think the value of the environment is more important, so. And now, is there any other counselor who has not spoken on this who wishes to speak? Counselor Mayo?
Thank you, Madam President. As a person who's picked up a number of bags of trash myself in the last year, I think it was reported last year, I picked up 400 bags of trash bags, which included a good number of reusable bags that didn't end up being reused, they ended up being reused on the streets of Main Street and Wells Street and High Street. Those are the only three streets that I picked up, and I picked up 400 bags of trash. So, I am in favor of the ban. I will vote, I will vote for the ban. I would like to vote for a ban tonight. I think the voters have voted for us to represent them in issues that are this important, and that's what democracy is about. It's, I understand the referendum, I understand where that's coming from, but I also, I also believe that it's representation by election, and that's, I'm doing the job that I was elected to do. And I would like to not pick up trash bags. Thank you.
Anybody else who hasn't spoken? I want to give everybody an opportunity. Okay, Counselor Mass?
I just want to answer some of the questions that I heard from my colleagues. First of all, yes, if the library went to a non-binding question, question at a general election and was voted favorably, I would vote for the, I would have voted for the library. In fact, I asked to put that question on the last ballot, and the majority of the council would not do that, or at least a form of that question on the last ballot. The, the, some counselors say, let's just deal with this. We did deal with this. We voted it down. No, we dealt with it by putting it on the ballot for a citizen group. The voters voted it down. It was taken up anyway, even though it was voted down. The council voted it down, and then the minority of the council, even though they had the votes to block reconsideration and block this for nine months, because we believe in debate and cooperation and want to hear from you, voted to allow reconsideration, and now we're heard, stop talking about it, just vote it down, because apparently, or vote for it, because apparently you don't want to hear from us as much as we want to hear from you. The, the, I'm told, plastic isn't that important. Well, maybe not to the people who are proponents of this, and I understand that, but there are other people who it is important to. We talk about it's not more important to the environment. Well, you know, we use a lot of natural gas and carbon fuels to create electricity in Massachusetts, and we're sitting here at 10 o'clock at night with a fully lit building. We could be here at candlelight. We could be. We could choose to use what our grandparents used and have kerosene lamps out, right? We could choose that, but we choose not to. Sometimes people make decisions on, on not just what's good for the environment, but what's good for themselves individually as well. And then we make balances and choices, and it's a hard choice. I, I understand most of you think that this is an easy choice. Well, if it's such an easy choice, why are you afraid to let it go to the voters? Especially when, if the voters vote yes, it'll start quicker, three months sooner, because the election is in November, and this wouldn't go into effect until January. So at this time, I will move to strike under effective date, one year from the date of enactment, and replace with upon the passage at a townwide election.
Second.
Okay, an amendment to the motion has been made and seconded, so we're talking on the amendment to the motion. So, let's start. Counselor Ellis?
I will support this as written if this amendment passes. End of story. Thank you.
Counselor Dolan?
So, speaking directly to the amendment, there's, there's a fatal flaw in this plan, which is that if we make it effective upon the referendum, that gives businesses zero time to prepare, to draw down their stock, to make plans. So, I don't think that this is a viable solution.
Vice President Ricketts?
Yeah, I'm not in favor of doing this piece at all, but I do want to say, I can remember a whole discussion on a big box store, and I remember that the town voted against it. It only lost by 10 votes, we keep saying that, but I was somebody who brought it up again and again. So, I understand that position about listening to the voters and then still doing something else, even after I saw those results. And the other reason why I don't want to do this is, I just don't want all the money people are gonna have to spend for and against campaign stuff, just for the plastic bag. It's, look at the amount of money that we're gonna spend on this issue at the end of the day. It's, it's not worth it. We were worried, I was worried about a nickel? Now I gotta worry about campaign signs? So, I'm, I'm ready. I'm ready to vote.
Counselor Gilmore?
So, kind of going back to what Counselor Wheeler had mentioned earlier, I feel like we, we have the votes to pass this, as is tonight, without an amendment. But there is a part of me that wants to explore the idea of putting the library to a non-binding referendum, and I feel like, I think that this would pass in an election, and I think that the library would also pass in an election, and I don't know if it's appropriate to consider the two together. But I think that if we had a commitment from others on the town council that we would honor what our voters choose, then I would be willing to do this for that.
Just a point of clarification, part, first, and Counselor Mass, I'll ask you, I heard you say that in a general election, if in a general election...
Regular town election.
A regular, so, not a special election?
That's right.
So, it would be too late? There's no way to have the library vote in a, in a regular town election? So what, Counselor Gilmore, what I hear you asking for is, would counselors tonight support, if the town voted in a non-binding, special election, that would have to happen before April 30th, would you, would you have a commitment? And I, unfortunately, I think that is, it's gonna, gonna be too speculative at best, because we don't know if it's possible to have that non-binding election. Though, counselors are free to answer the question. I don't want a stiny debate on it. And again, we're kind of mixing a little bit of apples and oranges here, because we're still on the, we're on the, we're on the amendment to the main motion, which I guess what the relation is, is that this amendment is to have an election to decide. So if anybody wants to speak to that, perhaps Counselor Ellis?
I just wanted to speak to the question that was posed. I would, I, I believe that if there's, if there's going to be an election for anything, there's a reason that there's timeframes put into the rules when it comes to elections. And I believe that, that what I seconded here allows for a level playing field going forward into the election, because it gives both sides the chance to say, okay, we're gonna have an election. I cannot support that with a special election called what'll be less than two months away from the actual election, when one side has been able to campaign effectively for almost a year, and the other side didn't know there was gonna be an election, well, neither side knew there was gonna be an election. But, it, it actually, on the, on the library election question, I believe, and I don't know, because I haven't gotten anything back from elections, if we put it to a vote, the spirit of the campaign finance law is essentially violated by all of the campaign that happened, unbeknownst to the people who were campaigning. And that is not good. I cannot fathom how, how we could have a fair election on the library when there's so much information that we don't know about things, that I have to say, I have been asking almost daily for information about it, and received a minute portion of that information back, and in some cases, just didn't get a response. So, I have been asking questions every day to try to get to the bottom of the questions that I have about the library, and then I read articles in the paper that are suspect at best, when it comes to numbers. So, I, I couldn't, I couldn't take the, the votes of the voters after, on an election that is scheduled almost less than two months before the deadline for something, when one side has been able to campaign the whole time. It's just not a fair playing field, whereas this would be a fair playing field, because we could say, we're going to have an election, everybody knows there's gonna be an election, they know when it's gonna be, and it was, it was put out there at the same time for everybody. So I, the answer to the question is, I, I would not be, I, I may find out from the information that comes in, that it's great, but I can't, I couldn't even go to the ballot and make an informed decision based on the information that we've gotten already, because there is very suspect information that I was going to go through in detail at the last meeting, but I did not have that chance to. So speaking to the person who said, you have to give us a reason why you're gonna vote this way or that way, I was gonna detail my information and hope to get the answers to those questions, and that didn't happen. So, it's just, it's, it's apples and oranges between the two different votes for me.
Counselor Sun?
I just, I can't figure out why it'd hurt to go through in November and have it, if it passes, if we get the input, it'd be, in January, the pre, you know, first, it'd be probably the second in January, it would be like law. Just like, you know, the president's elected, he gets sworn in the second of January, and it's, he's a president. Just like us, when we get, we voted in, in January, we're honoring the town and our, our duties. I don't see why it would hurt for this to go, just like it is when we get elected or re-elected, for this to go before the whole town, which I think it would pass, but we'd have the knowledge from all of them, instead I just, you know, we know exactly how everybody wants it to go. And I just think it's fair for everybody to have this happen in November. You know, it's just, it's my, my foresight to see this happen, because it'd go, go quicker. And like Big Y's already started, and Foster's has paper bags. The only store that hasn't done anything so far is stopped and shopped. But that way, it would say, okay, now we know that we have to obey what's, what's put out there. And I know, in my eyes, it'd be better to have, what, 17,000 people, if they all vote, to have that okayed by them. Because I'm just only one person, and my precinct's only about 1,500 people, or a little more. So I'd just let the whole town decide, rather than 13 of us.
Vice President Ricketts?
I make a motion to call the question.
Okay, motion's been made to call the, call the question, it's been seconded, and we're voting on the amendment, so we're not voting on the entire... Yes, so we're voting to call the question on the amendment. Clerk, could we do a roll call vote?
Counselor Sun?
Yes.
Counselor Ellis?
Yes.
Counselor Pythram?
Yes.
Counselor Dolan?
Yes.
Counselor Gilmore?
Hold on, I'm confused. Voting yes means we're voting on as amended by Counselor Mass?
Which is voting on to vote.
Okay, fine, yes.
Counselor Wheeler?
Yes.
Counselor Mayo?
Yes.
Counselor Leonovich?
Yes.
Counselor Mass?
No.
Vice President Ricketts?
Yes.
Counselor Stempel?
Yes.
President Reno, would you like to vote?
Sure, yes. So the, the, calling the question passes, so now we're going to vote on the amendment to the motion, and the amendment is to place this on the November election, basically. That's the Cliff Notes version. So, could we please do a roll call vote on the amendment to the motion?
Counselor Sun?
Yes.
Counselor Ellis?
Yes.
Counselor Pythram?
Yes.
Counselor Dolan?
No.
Counselor Gilmore?
No.
Counselor Wheeler?
No.
Counselor Mayo?
No.
Counselor Leonovich?
Yes.
Counselor Mass?
Yes.
Vice President Ricketts?
No.
Counselor Stempel?
No.
President Reno, would you like to vote?
Uh, no.
You're voting now?
Yeah.
Or no, you don't want to vote.
So the, so it fails. So the amendment to the motion fails, so now we're back to the main motion. Counselor Mass was the first one I saw.
This is gonna be my last comment on, on this subject. It's clear that the counselors who want this to pass have the votes tonight. It's clear. But there was a question that was asked, and I didn't get an opportunity to answer that, and that's what, what I would do if there was a non-binding question on the library. And the answer to that, and it only takes, by my count, one counselor to flip, by the way, to pass the library. The answer to that question, to me, is, it depends. It depends on what the turnout at that election is. If it's a 1% turnout, like the bonding for the tech school building construction, I'm not gonna put a lot of weight into that. If it's a turnout similar commensurate with the last mayoral election, I would put a lot of stock in that, and I anticipate I'd vote yes. The only reason I didn't vote yes for the Styrofoam ban that was, which I didn't agree with, but which the voters voted for, is because we specific, they added language that wasn't in the ballot question, that is taken out in this ordinance about nonprofits and people who are, are, are doing charitable work, and I would have otherwise voted for that. So, I, I think there's nothing quite as sacred as people voting and what they have to put it on a non-binding question, when they just voted not to put a binding question on something that we did. It would, I'd love us to consider tabling this matter to give us an opportunity to reconsider that, that those two subjects together, and to have this passed quicker. I know that there's a subject that there's no spend, there's no opportunity for people to spend down their stores. That's a business decision. The businesses in town will know that this would go toward, that they'd have six months to spend down instead of a year, and they can make a decision whether or not they thought the consumers would get behind this or not. I trust business to make the right decision, even businesses like Greenfield Market that bear the market pressure and are certainly socially progressive.
Counselor Stumpel?
I vote, I mean, I move to call a question.
Can I make a change to the...
No, the move has been made to call the question, is there a second?
But he's had months, no.
No, a move has been made to call the question, is there a second?
Yes.
Point of parliamentary procedure goes ahead of any item, including calling the question, Madam President, I believe.
What's your point?
Madam President...
A parliamentary procedure.
Is it, am I not correct that the president of the council can call a move to call the question out of order if they so choose, so that a member of the council might have an opportunity to speak?
You are correct in that, but I'm going to let the move to call the question proceed because I feel like we have talked about this. And it has been seconded, the move to call the question has been motioned and seconded, and we're gonna call, take a roll call vote on it.
Counselor Sund?
But he's just had so much time tonight, like, no, we can't.
Yeah, I'll come back. Counselor Alice?
No.
Counselor Pythram?
No.
Counselor Dolan?
Yes.
Counselor Gilmore?
Yes.
Counselor Wheeler?
Yes.
Counselor Mayo?
Yes.
Counselor Leonovich?
No.
Counselor Mass?
Yes.
Vice President Ricketts?
Yes.
Counselor Stumpel?
Nope, he just...
He made the motion.
Yes.
I was telling Counsel Stumpel she made the motion.
Counselor Sund?
So you just, you just got it?
Yes.
So you just, now you can change it. Because he just, no, because as it just voted yes. So reconsideration.
The question has been called, and it has been voted on in the affirmative. So now we're gonna have a roll call vote on the original motion, the amendment did not pass. So the motion as written in the packet, we're going to vote on right now.
Wait, I thought we just voted yes.
Counselor Sund?
Yes.
Counselor Alice?
No.
Counselor Pythram?
No.
Counselor Dolan?
Yes.
Counselor Gilmore?
Yes.
Counselor Wheeler?
Yes.
Counselor Mayo?
Yes.
Counselor Leonovich?
No.
Counselor Mass?
No.
Vice President Ricketts?
Yes.
Counselor Stumpel?
Could you say yes?
Yes.
President Reno, would you like to vote?
Yes. Vice President Ricketts?
The Town Council moved that it be ordered, that the Greenfield Town Council approves new ordinance, Chapter 162, the Greenfield Patriotic Activities Committee, as attached Exhibit A. This committee shall be charged with organizing and increasing participation in the Veterans' Day, Memorial Day, and Fourth of July parades of the Town of Greenfield, and further amends the table and index of contents of the code, and further that the non-substantial changes in the numbering of the ordinance be submitted in order that it be in compliance from the numbering format of the Code of the Town of Greenfield.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, report from committee?
So I believe this was two yes, two abstentions.
Does anyone on the committee want to talk about their vote and why, starting with the Vice President?
The night that we had a full discussion on this, Tim from the Veterans' Office had come. And from the beginning, I was against this because of the size of this committee. And right now, we're having a hard time filling the committees that we have. So the size of this, I am just not in favor of. When Tim saw this, he saw portions of this, like somebody would have to be, and I'm so sorry, I don't remember, but different distinctions of their military career, and he said, you don't even have those people in Greenfield, meaning the mayor could never put them on this committee to begin with. He also was very upset that he invites our full council for all the parades, and that our council members do not attend. And so that part felt kind of hard to be in favor of this, when that was, you know, one of his biggest complaints about the parades and stuff. So I, you know, ask questions like, what do we do? How do we market it so people come out? And it's true that the numbers are declining for people to come out to watch these parades. And so this new 35-member body is to help increase that. And I would do everything on social media and help the council to talk about this more during our meetings, right before these parade times, so that we could maybe increase. I just don't feel like this committee is a piece, but I'm sure that it will pass this committee. I do hope that the mayor will veto it, basically because we can't fill other committees. And learning more from Tim and the mayor and other veterans about this, they had other ideas as well. So like I said, if it passes, I'll be fine with it, and I'll do all I can to hopefully talk more counselors into attending. This was my first time ever missing one of these parades. And I don't feel like we all need to be there, and it's really personal choice whether anyone on council wants to march in these parades. I just have always felt it an honor, ever since I became a counselor. So those are my reasons. I know that Counselor Mass, he's the one who drew this up, so he will have a lot to say, but he fully knows everything that I've already said, because I stated this, and I really worked hard to learn more about how he chose these people to be on it. And I felt bad that, you know, the Recreation Department was one of the pieces, because they're one of the people that we've cut their budget two years in a row. We don't do parades on Fourth of July as it is now, but we do do something on the common. And to add another piece to them is really hard, because they work on all their programs so in advance. I mean, I've already received an email today about Winter Carnival and what pieces I possibly could help with, and they are really on top of this. And we're just putting something else on their plate that I don't think, well, it doesn't, it's really not fair or unfair, because the mayor would have to try to appoint all these people that were listed anyway, and they certainly would decline from that Recreation Department anyway. So having them on there just wastes time of trying to put effort forward for people they're not gonna send. So other people can chime in that were at that meeting.
Counselor Mass, I believe you proposed this ordinance, so do you want to speak to it?
Thank you, President Reno. Couple of items preliminary, just to clarify. What the Veterans Agent said is, all of these organizations don't live in Greenfield, there are members of all of these organizations, they may belong to a VFW that's in a different town, because we don't have a VFW in Greenfield, but there are people in Greenfield who belong to all these veterans organizations. And it allows the Recreation Department or a designee, it doesn't actually have to be a member of the Recreation Department to serve, they just get to pick. But I think there are some technical problems with this, I raised these at committee, and I had hoped to have an amendment ready for the full council for tonight, and I simply don't. I think there are issues related, and I'm the one who drafted, so shame on me, but I think there are issues clarifying the mayor's authority to appoint some of these people rather than by position and term of office, so I would move to refer back to committee at this late hour.
Second. Okay, a motion's been made and seconded to basically move back to committee. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? This will be moved back to committee. Counselor Stumpel? Page 50.
Move that it be ordered, that the Town, the Greenfield Town Council, are we City Council? That the Greenfield Town Council take from the table order of number FY19-062, the Town Council, upon recommendation of the mayor, ordered that the council authorizes the payment FY18 bills for $1,546.82 from the FY19 Energy Department budget, Eversource $263.14, Eversource $1,283.68, which was tabled at the December 19, 2018 Town Council meeting.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded, report from committee?
We did not hear this because it was tabled, so we didn't revisit this.
Okay. Okay. So it was a unanimous positive vote? Okay, Counselor Mass?
Madam President, I'm not gonna vote for a six-month-old bill, and we're down a member, I'd move to table again. Because it'll be defeated if it's not tabled.
This does require 12 votes. So is there a second?
Second.
Okay, a motion's been made and seconded to table, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? Motion table carries. Counselor Stumpel?
No. Eversource.
Okay, the Town Council, upon recommendation of Mayor Martin, in order to approve payment of a prior-year invoice in the amount of $4,750, ordered that the Greenfield Town Council approve the payment of a prior-year invoice for NextWest Company in the amount of $4,750 to be paid from the FY19 Greenfield Technology Budget.
Motion's been made and seconded, report from committee? This was a positive unanimous vote, a recommendation. Is there any discussion? Counselor Mass?
Same issue, motion to table.
Is there a second? There's been a motion to table, it's been seconded, it's non-debatable, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? No. Abstained? Motion carries.
The Town Council, upon recommendation of the mayor, ordered that the following sums be appropriated from the contractual stabilization fund to fund retroactive provisions of contract agreements. Fire up to $27,000, dispatch up to $13,000.
Motion's been made and seconded, report from committee? This was a unanimous positive recommendation. Any discussion? Counselor Alice?
There was one abstention, and that was myself.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's okay. I just, I abstained from this because contrary to some statements that were made in the newspaper, my partner does in fact still work in dispatch, and therefore is eligible for some of this money, so I will be abstaining. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Counselor Stumpel?
I guess my question doesn't have to do with this, but I have a question about the ones that were tabled. No, sorry. I put my hand down.
Okay, we're gonna vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Counselor Alice abstains. Motion carries. Counselor Stumpel?
The Town Council, upon recommendation of the mayor, ordered that up to $109,340 be appropriated from the General Stabilization Fund for Wisdom Way Road Design.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, report from committee? This was a unanimous positive recommendation. Is there any discussion? Counselor Wheeler?
I'll just say that this is a big issue in my precinct, I've walked this with a couple of different residents who've expressed concerns, and I'm happy to see that this is, could move ahead sooner than we anticipated.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Counselor Stumpel? Page 64.
The Town Council, upon recommendation of Mayor Martin, in order to rescind borrowing authorities, ordered that, upon recommendation of the mayor, the following borrowing, I don't know what's wrong with me, the following borrowing authorities totaling $8,120,802 be rescinded.
Motion's been made and seconded, what is the report from?
No, I don't need to read them. Hold on.
You should.
Well, how about I do this? Ordered that, upon recommendation of the mayor, the following borrowing authorities totaling $8,120,802 be rescinded as detailed in the table below, for a total rescission of $8,120,802.
Does that work? Motion's been made and seconded, report from committee? A positive unanimous recommendation. Unanimous. Any discussion? Counselor Alice?
Yeah, I'd just like to say, I'm glad that we see this come forward, because we, there are some on the council that have been asking for rescissions to come forward more frequently, so it's good to see this. It's not a big deal for me, but I wished I had seen this at Ways and Means, but I have a question based on some things that were said after we had our Ways and Means meeting. There's one senior center planning that has a balance of $90,000 and an amount to rescind of $63,000, but we were told that this hasn't been closed out yet, so should we really be rescinding any of that if this project hasn't been closed out? And I don't know the answer to that question.
Director Gilmore or Mayor Martin, would one of you like to speak to that?
I'm not certain. The, I think we had several votes for the senior center, Community Center, and involved a feasibility study in the beginning and the planning, and then we had a, we had the project at 4.75 million after that. So I think that's why we rejected...
That's correct, there actually is, the one you're rescinding is from the planning, it isn't from the actual 4.2 million authorization. So there were two authorizations still on the books.
So you're comfortable that this can be rescinded?
Yeah, we went through everything.
I just, after hearing that it wasn't closed out, I didn't want to do something that was gonna screw that up.
Right.
So, okay, thank you.
Any more, any more debate? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Counselor Stumpel?
Oh, hold on to your seats, it's gonna be a wild ride. The Town Council, upon recommendation of Mayor Martin, in order to establishing an assessment for sewer improvements under MGL Chapter 80 and 83, ordered that sewer improvement shall be made on and in Picket Lane, a public way, and the betterment assessed on all privately-owned parcels of land on Picket Lane, and specifically the following parcels. R2322A0, R2322B0, R2322C0, R2325C0, R2339A0, R2340, R23410... R2322A0, R2322B0, R2322C0, R2325C0, R2339A0, R2340, R23410, R23430, R23440, R23450, R23460, R2346A0, R2346B0, R23470, I feel like I'm reading out bingo, I'm sorry, R23490, R2360, R23620. The sewer improvements shall be made pursuant to the plans created by the City of Greenfield Engineering Department. Affixed heretofu shall be recorded at the Reed Franklin County Registry of Ds within 90 days of this order. The estimated betterment assessment for the sewer improvements on each parcel referenced herein shall be in the amount of $7,501.
Is there a second? Motion's been made and seconded. Report from committee?
This was also, it's getting late. This was also a unanimous positive recommendation. Just so counselors are familiar, we did already vote this and we did vote this through unanimously. So, this is just some administrative cleaning up, and so I hope that we'll have your support for the residents on Picket Lane once again.
Any other discussion? Counselor Sun?
All I know is the residents there, well, a lot of them I know personally are, want this to get started.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. Counselor Stempel. Page 72.
The Town Council upon recommendation of the mayor, in accordance with Massachusetts general laws, moved that it be ordered, that the Greenfield Town Council approves the following repurposing of previously authorized financial order FY18-107 for the Bascom Bridge Rail Project to purchase and install guardrails on Adams Road in the amount of $13,990.
Is there a second? Motion's been made and seconded. Report from committee?
This was also a unanimous positive recommendation. Director Warner provided us all with images of the guardrail in question. The road is quite the hazard, especially if you can consider the weather that we're about to have. If someone were to go off the road in that space, they would certainly go over and it would be a substantial tragedy. So, I urge my counselors to support this.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I don't think Just Roots went to a committee or did it?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, Counselor Stempel. Page 78 and then page 79.
We happily had this in Ways and Means. The Town Council moved that it be ordered to waive the requirements set forth in Chapter 27, Article 1, Contract Review, to allow the Town Council to consider a contract between the Town of Greenfield and Just Roots, Inc.
Second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Report from committee?
We didn't take this specifically up in the committee. I think this is just to allow for the contract.
Counselor Ellis?
This, this, this vote is to vote to use the exception section of the ordinance, which is 27-3. So that's what this vote is for. And while I have the floor, I will say, it occurred to me after our Ways and Means meeting that I probably should have abstained because I believe I may have a conflict of interest on a business side of things for myself with one of the people involved. So, I'm going to abstain from this. I should have abstained, I believe in Ways and Means, and likely should have abstained at the last meeting where we took up the money for Just Roots. So, I will be in the office tomorrow to fill out a conflict of interest form to, just to cover that, and I'll abstain from both of these votes. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other, Counselor Mass?
I heard the questions at Ways and Means related to why time was of the essence of this. I didn't hear any reason why time was specifically of the essence. I have a lot of concerns about the lease itself and the contract. I'd like to ask more questions and get answers to those. I couldn't support it as it stands today. I'm not saying I couldn't support it after, after getting more information. For example, I learned today that the plan was to put a solar array on that property, which I did not know. There's, I didn't, I saw the provisions of the lease related to subleasing, and I presume that was subleasing plots to farmers. I did not assume that it was a solar array. I have real concerns about long-term subleases for more than three years that don't come before the council. I don't know if we can legally do that. Maybe we can, I just don't know if we can. And I'd like to get some more information about this particular contract before we vote it. So, while it requires two-thirds to pass it, it only requires three to object to taking up any measure in its whole and in passing it in a single meeting, and I would certainly be objecting to item number 11 if we did waive this. But I'd ask that we not do this, that we follow the regular order, there's no emergency, and I'd ask that we vote no on item 10 and take this up next month.
Counselor Mass, are you proposing to table?
No, a motion, if we vote down number 10, number, we can't take up number 11, number 11 would automatically come up at our next meeting. We have, the provision of the statute requires that the council have 30 days to review any lease in excess of three years, and there's a reason for that in place, to have adequate time to look at all of the information, ask questions, and have investigation.
Is there more discussion on this? Counselor Mass, I want to ask you to reiterate that again. I'm not, I'm not so sure it's being understood, and I'm not understanding it.
Chapter 27, Article 1, we've often had contracts that come before us for more than three, more than three years, and we all, any lease is, anything that's more than three years, we get in writing with 30 days to review. This is a 30-year lease, it's substantially, 10 times longer than three years. I have some concerns about the legality of the lease itself, I'd like to get those answered. I have some questions about the economics of the lease, I'd like to get those answered. And I think, I think it bears on us doing the regular form. The only reason why we're supposed to waive, even under the statute, is if time is of the essence, and I did not hear during, I heard, we'd like to get this done because we've been working on it for a very long time, which I certainly understand, but this council hasn't been working on it for a very long time, and I think we are entitled to adequate time to review and, and be fully informed in making our decision.
Vice President Ricketts?
Madam Clerk, maybe, could you remind me when we received this information?
I don't have the exact date that it was emailed, but I believe it was emailed about a week and a half, week ago. It was for the five-day rule, so it was five days prior to the council meeting.
All right, so we didn't, we didn't receive this tonight at Ways and Means, by any means?
No, we received it.
So we had everything.
For the five-day rule.
All right, and so we just, none of us, not just Counselor Mass, but I didn't, I don't remember seeing it in my email. There were no questions or anything that have come back so that we could have asked Just Roots or the mayor before tonight, correct?
It was received on January 9th.
All right.
Counselor Gilmore?
President Reno, would it be possible to ask if there's somebody in the room who knows if there's a deadline? Because I think that if we don't have to do this tonight, I don't think I have a problem with supporting a counselor who wants to do a little more research.
Thank you, I appreciate all the consideration. So, the urgency on our part is that, as you say, there is, what this lease allows us to do is have the ability to explore certain activities on the land. A solar development is one of those activities we would be exploring, so it doesn't say that we're going to do a solar project, but it allows for that exploration. And just as a point, that solar project that we would be exploring would be on non-APR land, it is not land that is being used for agricultural use. And legal counsel for the town has reviewed this lease, so I just wanted to make that point as well. So the urgency is really because when you're even exploring a solar project, getting in the queue is paramount to whether you're successful or not in realizing that project, it takes a very long time. So that's where the urgency comes from. Is it an emergency? No, it's our preference, so we get in the queue.
Thank you. Okay, so counselors understand, so what we're voting on, the first one would, if we vote no, then we're not making an exemption here, and that it has to go, then it means that the next, the next item will, we won't be, we won't be voting on. Okay, so, all in favor? Opposed?
No.
No. I have a feeling folks maybe don't understand what we're doing, because not enough people. Okay, so this, item number 10, it waives the requirements set forth in Chapter 27, Contract Review. So it means that we're not going to give the contract enough time to be reviewed, so we, it's, it sounds like, I don't want to, I don't want to speak for anybody, but it sounds like this council and Just Roots is okay with us waiting to vote on the contract. So it would mean we would vote no because we don't need to waive the requirements for the contract to be voted on. And then we could give, then we could give it some proper time, and I have some questions myself about the solar array and what's planned for Just Roots, and so I would like some time as well, so I would be voting no on this, to waive the requirements. Counselor Ellis?
I just didn't know if everyone was clear. I could try to explain it in a different way that I understand it, but if everyone gets it, then I won't.
Does everyone get it this way? Okay.
Okay, so if you look at the Article 1, Contract Review on page 78, what this motion is doing is invoking the exception section. So, by invoking the exception section, you are saying that you are not following 27-1 and 27-2. And 27-2 says, under ordinance, you have to have 30 days prior to any consideration of a contract. So if you vote to accept, if we, if you all vote to accept the council from needing that 30 days, you can then vote on it. So a no vote for this means you want to take the 30 days to review the contract, a yes vote means you want to move on and just vote on the contract tonight. Does that make sense?
It does, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so, we're voting on to waive the requirements set forth in Chapter 27, Article 1, Contract Review, to allow the Town Council to consider a contract between the Town of Greenfield and Just Roots. All in favor?
Yes.
Can we do a roll call vote, please?
Sure.
This is a two-thirds vote, too, just so that you know.
Counselor Sun?
No.
Counselor Pyfram? Counselor Dolan?
Yes.
Counselor Gilmore?
No.
Counselor Wheeler?
Yes.
Counselor Mayo?
Yes.
Counselor Leonovich?
Yes.
Counselor Mass?
No.
Vice President Ricketts?
Yes.
Counselor Stempel?
Yes.
President Reno, would you like to vote?
Yes, I would like to vote, and my vote is no. So the motion fails, so we are not going to be voting on number 11. Because we needed a two-thirds vote for the exemption to pass, and I do want to say, if I'm going fast or looking, if seeming like, if it seems like I'm trying to rush through things, please do as Vice President Ricketts did and stop me and ask for clarification. Sometimes this stuff is coming at us at breakneck, breakneck speed, and it's not our day jobs. So, we don't have our heads in this all day, so please ask questions, there's a lot of things I don't understand. Didn't that just give you a lot of confidence in me? Okay, presentation of petitions and similar papers? Report of committees, I'm okay with skipping that tonight if everybody else is because we have committees changing. I guess Counselor Stempel isn't, okay.
I just have one.
Yes.
Part of committee, and for what it's worth, because we didn't take up the last vote, but for what it was worth, the vote for Just Roots on the Ways and Means Committee was a positive unanimous, less, I guess, his now abstention, but, so for what it was worth.
Thank you. Unfinished business. Old business. I have, I have some old business I want to bring up. At the last council meeting, Counselor Ellis had rightly said that the motion to table the library vote was done more quickly than I think a lot of counselors had expected, and so I want to give us an opportunity at this time, if anybody wants to speak to the library, even though there isn't a motion on the floor, if anybody wants to speak to, because I feel like we may have cut the, cut the talk short, so now because this is under old business, you don't have to speak, but if you want to speak, you can speak. No point of parliamentary procedure, Counselor Mass?
I hate to do this, Madam President, but I don't believe we can debate or have a discussion absent a motion on the floor. We could certainly take it from the table.
I respectfully disagree. I still, I think because it's under old business that we can do this. So I'm going to, again, let anybody who wants to speak to it, speak to it. Counselor Ellis?
Yes, I did say that. I did not bring what I had prepared because I wasn't thinking we were going to be taking it up tonight. After reading the article in the paper about it being put off and having it not on the agenda, I assumed it wasn't coming up, so I'm actually not prepared tonight to do it because I actually have a very long statement written, so, but thank you for the opportunity.
You're welcome. Does anybody else want the opportunity? No, okay, I tried. New business. Motion for reconsideration. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
This motion has been passed. This meeting has been adjourned.
All of our productions at GCTV are sponsored in part by Bay State Health, providing the care you and your family need when you need it close to home. Visit them online at baystatehealth.org. Greenfield Savings Bank, visit them at 400 Main Street in Greenfield, call them at 774-3191, or go online to greenfieldsavings.com. Greenfield Community College, providing access and excellence in higher education in the Pioneer Valley. Visit them at gcc.mass.edu. The Hammond Family, The Hammond Family are longtime supporters of Greenfield Community New Fortune Chinese Restaurant on the Mohawk Trail in Greenfield, visit them online at newfortunema.com, call them at 772-0838, and check them out on Facebook. Real Cleaning Services, cleaning Hampshire and Franklin County since 1972. We don't cut corners, we clean them. Check them out online at realclean.com, call them at 413-422-1143. Peoples United Bank, located at 45 Federal Street in Greenfield, you can call them at 774-3713, or visit them online at peoples.com. The Solar Store of Greenfield, replacing fossil fuels and nuclear power one home at a time. Visit them at 23 Fisk Ave, call them at 413-772-3122, or visit them online at solastoreofgreenfield.com. Thank you to our sponsors for supporting all of GCTV's productions.